We'll go ahead and call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners regular agenda session for August 14th, 2025 to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here back to our regular work session. I know we have a long, a long agenda, a lot of items. Hopefully, we can move through this swiftly, but effectively and efficiently and be respectful of people's time. So at this time, we'll go ahead and move to the invocation. And I'll ask Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Please stand for all those that can.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this afternoon, Lord Jesus. We ask that things be done in decency and order. We thank you for the privilege to represent all of those in Cumberland County. God, we ask that we make wise choices and decisions that will impact in a positive way all those that live here in Cumberland County. Lord, again, we just thank you. We ask for safety and protection of those that serve every day, from our first responders to those on Fort Bragg, our soldiers, and those that are afar and near. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and move forward to item one, approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, any changes?
Yes, I have three changes to the agenda, Chairman DeBiere. Item 4G proposed leave for community care, we want to remove that item off the agenda. Item 4L Crown Theater and Arena, request for qualifications and proposals. We would like for that to be moved to the next infrastructure committee meeting. And then County Attorney has reported that we need a short closed session to deal with attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318-1183.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the adjusted agenda. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
Second. We have a motion to approve the adjusted agenda that's been properly seconded. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
unanimous.
And we'll go ahead and move to item three, A, three presentations. Item A, Graves Creek Infrastructure Upgrade Update Stop Gap Measure for Graves Creek and Alderman Elementary Schools. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Amanda Lee, General Manager, Natural Resources, will present this item, this update, as we've been trying to provide water to the Graves Creek and Alderman Elementary Schools. I'll turn it over to Amanda.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Three stop-gap measures were discussed for Graves Creek and Alderman Road School. The first stop-gap measure was point-of-use filtration for the schools. We completed a pilot test on filters. Some were recommended. We found recommended in literature. Some were recommended by Dr. Detlef Knoppe. And the filter that we are moving forward with has been ordered as of this morning. Results, we don't have the last results, but the all the initial results came back as non-detect for PFAS. So that filter, we have ordered 21 filters today. I'm waiting on when to expect those 21 filters, but we are talking with plumbers about installation for drinking water fountains at both schools to happen within the next week. So that's stop-gap measure number one. Stop-gap measure number two was point of entry for the schools, where we would treat before it came into the schools. We are running into a little difficulty with that because of the iron treatment that's going on at Graves Creek Elementary, but we are continuing to pursue that option. I just don't have any updates for you today. Option three is drilling new wells. So I have some good news on that front. We were able to drill a test well at Graves Creek. And we're surprised to find two sandy layers. We have conducted zone testing of those layers. The bottommost layer produced 65 gallons per minute. So we have collected samples. We do not anticipate the lab results from that sampling to return until September 10th. But we do not plan to go to Bedrock at Graves Creek because we hit that sandy layer. And our schedule for drilling at the Alderman School will be in October. And with that, are there any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Ms. Lee on these items, on the three descriptions? Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You stated that the filters will be, they will be put in the first week. Is that not correct?
That is, yes. We are working to get those from the manufacturer in the next few days, and we are working with plumbers, with getting quotes to get those installed before school starts. Yes, ma'am.
And can you just talk a little bit, you don't have to go into too much detail, how long would that stay in effect? Like, do the filters have to be changed every six months a year? What's the status update on that particular, how the process of how they work as far as longevity?
So for replacement schedule, I can't give you those definitive numbers exactly today because I'm still getting, when we ran the pilot, we ran water through continuous, and I need those numbers for those last runs. So I will come back to you on the replacement schedule.
Okay. And that way you'll let us know if they lasted six months, a year?
Yes.
Okay. If that information could be provided later would be great. And then you were stating on the step two in regards, I just wanted you to go back a little bit on that for me.
Okay. So step two is the point-of-entry system. That is where we would put treatment at the well before it goes into the school.
Do we have a tentative date on when we're going to be doing that?
Well, kind of what's influencing that now is we got, Graves Creek is a problem because of the iron treatment that's already there.
Okay.
But if we find out September 10th, if we are hopeful, and find that we don't have PFAS in that sandy layer that we found, we may be able to just chlorinate that water, and we'll work on a permanent well without, without the point-of-entry treatment if we find that we do not have PFAS issues.
So we just have to wait for those?
We are waiting for those results.
To come back? And if it comes back fine, can we tentatively look at somewhere between September and December?
Yes, I will come back with you with the schedule for that.
Okay. Thank you so much. That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized for round one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Amanda, have we got, I know PWC's been working on acquiring their necessary permits and their acquisitions for the extension of the water line that the General Assembly had provided funding for. Have they given you any indication, or have they communicated with you what their timeline is? And has it changed from the last time we were agreed on that?
I believe that was advertised for bids August 4th.
And project completion date?
Their initial project completion date was summer, but I've not reviewed the contract documents to see what they put in there for completion time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions on these, this presentation? Thank you for the update. We appreciate it and the focus on this and getting clean, safe drinking water to those schools.
Okay.
Regulated drinking water. We'll go ahead and move to item B, Rhodes Pond Improvement and Renovation Project.
Yes, we received $500,000 from the state regarding Rhodes Pond and modifying it for parking and renovating their park trails. Amanda Lee will provide an update as to where we stand with that project.
And real quick, before you start, Ms. Lee, just as a little bit of background, so we wanted this to come back in front of the board. This was dollars that were brought back from the General Assembly several years ago. I had a conversation with some of the municipal mayors who had some concerns on the progression of that project, which was really nothing. And I had a conversation with Representative Wheatley as well. And so we came together, and there's been some movement. So we wanted to make sure the board was updated on where we were in that project. And I know we're, Ms. Lee will give that to us, but I wanted to make sure you understood the context on why this is now coming forward. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So as we discussed, the county's received the money from the state to make improvements to Rhodes Pond related to parking and bathroom facilities. And this is a little rendering of what that renovation might look like. Another angle of what that renovation would look like. This is a preliminary site plan, and it's a little busy, but you can make out where the parking areas are, the proposed parking areas, handicap spaces here for the existing restroom. We've got a protected area here. We plan to use the existing septic tank that has been, that has been reviewed, and we have a report on the existing septic tank in your packet. And so that's going to be off limits to traffic. But what that, what happens is that area is used as an access to DOT property. So we need to talk a little bit, before I get into that, I want to talk a little bit about trail restoration. We are hoping that there will be enough funding in the project to restore the trail that was blocked during the dam construction. We'll put pedestrian safety measures in so that we can reopen that trail. So let's talk about property control a little bit. So DOT still owns that property adjacent to Rhodes Pond. They have indicated that they no longer need this parcel. And we've also had some preliminary discussions with the Wildlife Resources Commission. They may be interested in a long-term lease. The reason that we want to talk about this is because Rhodes Pond is state game land. And we need to think about the compatibility of a state game land for things like deer hunting. It was allowed for deer, raccoon, and duck. How do we want to look at how that works with a phase two of Rhodes Pond? And also, the immediate concern is working with DOT so that we can preserve that septic field. There's another, this is the DOT property. Here's the restroom. It's 1.4 acres. So our recommendations are to explore the potential for a long-term lease for the Wildlife Resources Commission for the entire parcel, to engage in discussion with DOT about the adjacent property, and to proceed with the RFQ for professional services for restroom renovation and site design. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions? Vice Chairman Jones, and then I'll go to Commissioner Fairbrough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When you say long-term lease, just for those that are listening, can you provide what that is? And I know that the DOT is for the Department of Transportation. For those that listen, and RFQ, I know we're using acronyms, which is fine, but just for our listeners?
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Clarify what those acronyms are, number one. And number two, when we speak of long-term lease, what is the timeframe on that as far as years or months? Or we could just, if you could clarify that for our listening audience, I'd appreciate that.
So WRC is the Wildlife Resources Commission. They currently have control operate, they own the property. And with the property, there is, there are recorded state game lands. And there are certain restrictions with state game lands. So if we want to look at a long-term use of the property that is not consistent with state game land, then we need to have that discussion about what the property will be used for. With the RFQ, what I presented today was we did a pretty detailed basis of design memo that's in your packet that talks about some site considerations, that does a quick overview of what's the renovation cost for the restroom will be. But for us to move forward with this project, we will need to issue a request for qualifications from professional architectural engineering firms to do the detailed design work for the renovation and site design that we, so that we can obtain the proper permits and move forward with construction.
Thank you. Just wanted to, thank you so much for clarifying that and with the acronyms as well. And can you give or take what the estimate time period, I know you can't say specific, that that process, now that you've explained that in the detail, how long does that usually take? Are we looking at six months or a year when you state that they would have to make sure because of the game land and all that, that it was approved or not approved? What's the process time period or X, you know, just if you give an estimate, I know you can't say per year.
So I would say from a notice to proceed, once we bring our design professional onboard, I would say we would address that design within six months and those conversations within that six-month period.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all for me.
Commissioner Fairbrough?
Thanks, sir. You partially answered part of my question. The other part centered around safety. And with hunting going on, there's nothing, there's nothing out there that's top a rifle. And I don't know if that type of hunting is allowed, or if it's shotgun, the bow and arrow, just what it is. But I think as we move forward with DOT and WRC, Wildlife Resources Commission, for whatever we end up doing, safety's got to be the number one priority. And I question whether hunting land and recreation facility should be that close to each other. So, you know, I know that's going to be addressed as you go on, and I just wanted to make that observation.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this item? Again, just as a wrap-up, thank you, Ms. Lee, for bringing this forward and the work that you and ACM Phillips have been working on this. The municipal mayors are, especially the ones in this area, are excited about this, this project. It's kind of been sitting there for a while. This is an opportunity to engage into their communities and look at what kind of else can go out there, setting a framework that, you know, getting that back as a recreational opportunity for that part of our community. So again, thank you so much for moving this forward. Is there consensus to move forward with these recommendations? Anybody have any issues with this? Can we give general consensus to the staff to keep moving forward? All right?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll move to item C, flood monitoring and public alert capabilities.
Yes, Gary Crumpler, Acting Emergency Services Director, will present this item, introduce his staff that will present part of this presentation. We wanted to give the board an update and a public update of how we monitor floods and the technology that we use. I'll turn it over to Gary.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the opportunity to present on this very important topic regarding public notification and flooding. As we all know, Texas dealt with some pretty devastating floods, which has triggered some concerns here locally in our area. So I had staff prepare a presentation in regards to our current capabilities. I have with me China Gault. She is the emergency management planner over public notification and warning, as well as Amanda Scheck, who handles critical infrastructure, which includes our bridges and the stream gauges that we have on those bridges. So I'll turn it over to them for a brief presentation.
Thank you. As Gary mentioned, following recent severe flooding events, we want to ensure that the citizens of Cumberland County are aware of the flood monitoring measures that we take, as well as the public alerting notification system. Our goal today is to provide you with a clear picture of our current capabilities and highlight some challenges we face while identifying opportunities for improvement. We're going to first do that by identifying the equipment that we use, which are stream gauges. These are instruments placed along creeks, rivers, and waterways that measure the height and, in some cases, stream flow. These real-time readings are critical in tracking how waterways respond to rain, upstream flow, and other changes. And in a county such as ours that's prone to flash flooding, this information is vital. For emergency management, stream gauge data guides our evacuation decisions, response of floods, and informs recovery and mitigation planning. Cumberland County covers 652 square miles, including 6.1 square miles of waterway, which includes the Cape Fear River, the Rockfish Creek, Cross Creek, and the Little River. These, along with many smaller tributaries, create a mix of flash flooding and stormwater challenges across our area. This network detects rising water early, understanding its path, and allows us to understand its path and respond before it becomes a crisis. Cumberland County currently houses 24 stream gauges across our community, including five new stream gauges that Cumberland County installed in January of this year thanks to grant funding. The remaining are provided by three with the City of Fayetteville, one with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, three with North Carolina Emergency Management, and 11 from the United States Geological Survey. This is a visual of those stream gauges within Cumberland County. This is overlaid with the county's current waterway system. So the North Carolina stream gauges that we have, data is fed to the North Carolina Flood Inundation Mapping and Alert Network, also called NCFIAMAN. This is a statewide system that combines real-time reading with predictive flood mapping. It supports public awareness and emergency response. And FIAMAN's predictive modeling forecasts potential flooding, giving us time to act before critical thresholds are reached, providing timely, location-specific information for emergency operations and public safety partners. Some of our gauge data is displayed within WebYOCE, which is our emergency management information sharing platform, which gives our emergency staff and community partners up-to-the-minute flood information, providing coordination and response. We're also working with NOAA and other agencies to get the additional gauge monitoring information added to this platform. One of the great things about the NCFIAMAN network is it can automatically alert emergency personnel and public when water thresholds cross specific means, such as the normal monitoring or even major flood stages. These levels are based on historical data and are regularly updated. Users, to include all county residents, can set custom alerts for local impacts delivered via email or text. We strongly encourage residents, particularly those in low-line or flood-prone areas, to sign up and monitor these alerts as part of their personal preparedness efforts. Our team uses these alerts to evaluate risks and coordinate response, while backup methods like filled reports, drones, and ham radio ensure situational awareness in the event of a digital system failure. Together, these features create a resilient flood monitoring system for emergency operations and community readiness. As we strengthen our stream gauge system, we do face a few challenges. Two of our newly installed gauges were vandalized earlier this year, disrupting monitoring. Those repairs have been completed, and we are inquiring about options to add signage and security measures to prevent future incidents. Additionally, many residents don't know that stream gauges exist or that they can sign up for NCFIAMAN alerts. We're using social media and outreach to raise awareness and encourage the use of these tools. And finally, some of our flood-prone areas still lack coverage. Working with National Weather Service hydrologists, we're identifying gaps and seeking funding to install additional gauges. Our approach combines promoting options, expanding our network, and ensuring timely alerts to residents who can respond to these threats. I want to pass it off to China. She's going to address the alert portion. So reaching the public when it matters most. So Cumberland County uses iPAWS, which is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System, as its primary system for issuing mass notifications and public alerts. iPAWS is reserved for life-and-death emergencies, and these alerts should never be ignored. Unlike other notification systems, citizens do not need to opt-in. Everyone in the affected area will receive them automatically. So how iPAWS So how IPALS delivers emergency alerts. To use IPALS, agencies must apply and be approved by FEMA. Once authorized, they send alerts in the Common Alerting Protocol format, which ensures proper formatting and technical compliance. And then the message goes through IPALS open for sender and message validation before being distributed across multiple systems to reach the public quickly. And this entire process can happen within a minute. So once we alert, or once an alert is validated in IPALS, it's delivered through multiple systems. And it's important to note that in North Carolina, emergency alert system messages, or EAs, which are alerts sent through the TV and radio, can only be originated by North Carolina Emergency Management, the National Weather Service, or the State Highway Patrol. Wireless emergency alerts, or WAs, for Cumberland County can only be sent by Cumberland County Emergency Services and the National Weather Service. So geographic targeting in public areas. So reaching the right area at the right time. We use several tools to ensure emergency messages are sent to the right people in the right locations quickly and accurately. Working closely with GI's staff, we've pre-built shape files for key areas of interest throughout Cumberland County. These predefined zones allow us to send targeted alerts without delay during emergencies. When a system arises outside of those predefined areas, we can manually create a polygon in real time to define the impact zone and send alerts to only those within it. Additionally, we've implemented an automated geofence around the county that can be activated when needed, allowing us to push out public alerts countywide with minimum setup. So Cumberland Alerts is our community opt-in notification system. Residents can choose how to receive alerts and customize them by location and topic. Through our partnership with the National Weather Service, time sense of weather alerts are sent automatically, accounting for about 80% of our traffic. By signing up, you ensure you stay informed, even for events that may not be life-threatening but are important to you, to your safety and daily routine. And then this graphic on the right just shows how many people are currently signed up in our system and where we pull those contacts from. So Cumberland Alerts opt-in. Over the past few years, we've placed a much greater focus on educating the public about Cumberland Alerts. With help from PIO, we've launched a variety of awareness campaigns to increase community signups and understanding of the system. Our goal has been to make sure residents not only know the Cumberland Alerts exist, but also understand the benefits of opting in. These outreach efforts have been key in strengthening our connection with the community and helping more people stay informed when it matters most. So overall, Cumberland County benefits from integrated flood monitoring and alert systems, well-trained staff, and established partnerships. Our relationships also have, or our residents also have access to our flood tools like NC FIMAN and Cumberland Alerts to stay informed. Cumberland County Emergency Management, however, is working to improve how we notify the public and increase incident visibility countywide. We want to streamline how we collect, analyze, and act on data to help us identify trigger points earlier and issue more timely alerts. This proactive approach would give our community more lead time to react, make informed decisions, and stay safe. One improvement that we've been actively exploring is adding acoustic redundancy to our alerting strategy by installing outdoor devices and that can broadcast sirens and voice messages. These devices would help reach vulnerable populations, visitors, and those outdoors who aren't monitoring phones. And planned features include solar power, battery backup, and satellite connectivity to ensure operation during power or cell outages, building a resilient layered system so no one misses critical emergency information. So to evaluate how acoustic alerts could strengthen our emergency notifications, we recently demoed technology by layering their coverage over an existing evacuation zone in our system that we use during tropical storm Debbie. The map shows the modeled reach of the Little River area of Spring Lake off Manchester Road, which is a known flood-prone location. Using seven strategically placed acoustic devices, the projected coverage would include residential neighborhoods, businesses, and critical infrastructures, such as the wastewater treatment plant, with siren volumes ranging from about 85 decimals in the red zone to 70 decimals in the green zone, depending on surrounding noise conditions. An improving flood intelligence in Cumberland County. It's no secret that inland flooding is the top hazard in Cumberland County, and it doesn't take a hurricane to cause serious problems. Even localized storms can create dangerous conditions. To strengthen our response, we're exploring advanced weather and flood programs that deliver both predictive and real-time flooding intelligence. These tools can identify high-risk areas before flooding begins, giving us the ability to issue earlier warnings, move resources faster, and make data-driven decisions with live situational awareness. The example shown here compares a pre-landfall projection of Hurricane Hailing impacts, which are on the left, with what actually happened, which is the image on the right. While not a perfect match, a program like this could have narrowed the gap, potentially making the difference between lives lost during this tragic event. And the ultimate goal is to enhance safety and save lives by getting reliable, actionable data much faster than our current methods allow. And then I'll switch with Amanda to close. Just to wrap things up, while we note the progress and have identified challenges, success depends on strong tools, consistent communication, and dedicated outreach, technical integration to meet people where they are, both digitally and in the community. It's important to note that when we do our job right, nothing happens. There's no dramatic images, no flooded homes, no desperate rescues to point to as justification. Success in our field is invisible, but failures, that's what's filling the news. Unfortunately, we too often wait for that failure before we act, pouring recovery dollars into problems we could have prevented with a fraction of the cost in planning and mitigation. We cannot continue to reward reaction and neglect preparation. If we don't fund resilience now, we will fund regret later, and that bill will be higher, not just in dollars, but in lives, home, and community trust. Finally, the great news is our systems are working and it's only getting stronger. Now the focus is on making the success visible, sustainable, and meaningful. We're making these steps to continue improvement. These actions are investments in trust, readiness, and the quiet success of being prepared before success hit, I'm sorry, before a crisis hits. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you to the team for the presentation. I'll open it up for questions for Commissioners. Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for excellent presentation. So you all, maybe you did state or didn't, I was listening though. So we are a part of the Adapt the Gauge Program that the Public Safety has?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's great then. And that was my only main question, and just for our listening, like I said, we were doing a lot of acronyms. And again, thank you for your presentation, but for those that are listening, the website is F-I-M-A-N dot N-C dot gov, Sensor Flood Navigation Mapping and Alert Network.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you all for a great job. Appreciate it.
Of course, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yeah, and this really doesn't go to you all, I guess it goes to staff, because when we came through the hurricane, the monitoring and all of this is great, but it was cleaning out these creeks and Rockfish Creek, because that's what overflowed those, all of those, the banks of it. So even as we're monitoring, what are we doing yearly to clean out some of these? I know we've got a million-dollar grant to be able to do the one up by Methodist. We did do the one down off of Cedar Creek Road, but how often are we, you know, I'm sitting here looking on TV and up and rolling, they're in the creeks every day, somebody pulling out tires and stuff. So monitoring is good and being able to do all of that, but if we don't do that, I think you talked about the proactive part, which is cleaning up these creeks before it even starts.
So I will say to that, that our Sewell Water Department, through the co-op extension, they get scrap grants on a yearly basis to clean out some of our tributaries. Emergency Management has done a project partnering with the Town of Linden to clean out the canal that flooded during Florence. They have a more systemic problem because they have a beaver issue there as well, so they're working with Wildlife Resources to get that cleaned out. But we do continuously go after that funding to keep those streams clean.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, if you'll mind, is up in those other areas, they include the community in those cleanups. And so whether we start, I don't know which one does it, but whether we start something with the community being able to be a part of that. If you look up at the Moose River and all of that, the Eno and all of that, they have these where the community goes out, not just trying to do it once or twice a year, but that's just some things you might want to think about.
As you wrap that into our community cleanup days, that we're doing not just trash, but the streams too.
There is a gentleman that lives out in the Beaver Dam area that does clean out all the Beaver, actual Beaver Dams by himself. He has an Instagram page and he does it by himself. So we probably need to coordinate with him and try to work, give him some help too.
Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have two more questions that I thought of. I know that a lot of communities are going to getting floodlights for their community. I don't hear anything mentioned about that, because I do know, of course, number one, we have our unhoused population and not just that, but others that walk and sometimes you can't see those signs, I know, especially when there's flooding on Robinson Street. So I did want to ask that number one question, what are we doing to provide that? Or do we already have a lot of community safety floodlights that are in place? And if not, what do we need to do to get that in place? That's the number one question. And then number two, I know we were speaking of the different areas in Cumberland County and locations, but I wanted to know, does that include, because of course, parts of Hope Mills as well as Spring Lake are considered Cumberland County? And I didn't hear anything mentioned about that? Or do they have a separate type of services going for there, although they are considered? Areas of Graves Creek and Spring Lake and Hope Mills are considered Cumberland County? Is that separate, their services, or is that included as well? That's my question number two.
So your first question, did you say floodlights or flood signs?
Well, I, both, actually. I actually said floodlights though, because I've been reading up and I've seen on the news about how communities will have floodlights in place throughout their community when they're, they have different rivers, such as we do about Five, to be in place because of that of the homeless and just people that, you know, walk and different things. So, I mean, I guess you can elaborate on both those signs and floodlights for the community.
So we do have signs, matter of fact, in our emergency management storage area. And what we found that is, just like the stream gauges, we face a huge problem with vandalism. People will just tear the signs down. And we found that, this goes all the way back to several emergency services directors, that with the cost of replacing those signs, it didn't end up becoming effective. As far as the signs and the lights and the, the question about Hope Mills and the other jurisdictions, with that system that China highlighted, there are options to add visible cues to those. So that's something that we're also exploring. And as far as the multiple jurisdictions, we are the emergency management agency for the entire county. So we work closely with the City of Fayetteville Emergency Management, as well as the Town of Hope Mills, to make sure that we have systems in their communities. We've been trying to be very strategic about where we place these gauges. That's why we work in close conjunction with the National Weather Service Hydrology, so they can tell us exactly where to place them, because the funding, quite honestly, is limited for those types of gauges as far as grants that qualify. So say for instance, the Brick Grant that just, that closed several years ago, we applied for stream gauge funding through those, but they did not qualify because there were not eligible expense.
So at present, we don't have any lights, floodlights for the community?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? One quick question before, and we appreciate the briefing and the update. I think it's timely, especially even not just Texas, but North Carolina. When you spoke about the alarm system, which is great, I know we don't have that here, are we actively looking at grant opportunities or a process to get that here? I know that was one of the things that we saw in other locations that were important in alerted residents that may not have phone, text, internet.
So yes, sir. The product that China just showed you a picture of, even without having a contract with them, they are willing and actively searching for grant opportunities for us to apply for, to be able to get that funding. It's relatively expensive. Do you remember the cost for one?
$526,000.
$126,000 for one. So I think we're definitely actively trying to search for those grant opportunities.
Commissioners, anything else? All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Crumpler, we still do have alerting capabilities in our volunteer fire departments with their sirens that they have for the public alert system, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so in areas that are located near a fire department, I mean, that audible alert would be pretty loud in the event that we need to alert residents. And we still also have the capability through technology of doing some direct alerting as well, correct?
Correct. With those systems, a lot of them have decommissioned those, and they're just simply the speaker sitting up on the tower. So I think staff and we can look at ways to maybe leverage that a little bit. And then...
Yeah, that's what I'll say about that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation. We'll go ahead and move on to item D, Voice Dispatch Update. Candy Manager Greer?
Yes, Gary Crumpler will stay and present this item and give you an update on Voice Dispatch Update. We have some more tentative information, relevant information regarding the implementation of this. Gary, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. So even though that I provided the most recent update by Word document, I want to start off from where we left off at the June Board Commissioners Meeting. At that meeting, we highlighted that we had an upcoming meeting with the City of Greensboro to discuss their successes and their, the ways that they implement the system into their county. So ahead of that meeting, we had an internal meeting with ITS to discuss potential questions that we would have for them. So on June 17th, we had a virtual meeting with the City of Greensboro. That was a multi-agency meeting that included the City of Fayetteville, the City of Fayetteville IT, as well as RIT and Emergency Services. From that, we came to a decision to go with consulates and go over a full council, as we discussed at the last meeting. But out of that meeting came additional questions, and the City of Greensboro themselves recommended that we make a trip up there to see their system in action and to put eyes on how everything integrates into their server. So based off a, another meeting with US Digital Designs, we felt pretty confident that our decision was the three consulates at the time, and then we moved forward with ATSA, MCA, our Motorola-specific vendor, to provide us a quote. They provided the quote of $32,400, a little bit over $32,400, and advised the price would go up. Now, this was no fault of ours, it was just the way that the timing was whenever we requested the quote. Additionally, we had a meeting with MCA, which is another one of our Motorola-specific vendors, to talk about connectivity of the VHF. And remember, in the last meeting, we talked about that's the method in which the fire departments are alerted with their mobile pagers. Once we did that site visit, the first thing that the vendor told us whenever he walked into the Clifdale Radio Tower is, "Man is hot." And he expressed some concerns about the components that were within that building and the service life of them with the extreme heat or either extreme cold. So from that, he recommended maybe the installation of a split unit or some type of self-contained cooling device, which we'll talk about later on in the presentation. On June 27th, we met with USDD to talk through the final scope of the Voice Dispatch System. Based on that, they provided two quotes to us. One was for the city system, which was the $52,000 or the city side of things. And then the other was the $72,000, which was the county side. The county side is naturally higher because we house all the servers and all the components to make everything work. We house the CAD for the county. Additionally, in the July, beginning of July timeframe, we were notified of a board, a 911 board rule change was stated that... a 911 board rule change was stated that the, the PSAP or Public Service Answering Point had to review all the quotes before we could send them up to the 911 board for review and approval. Additionally, in July, we felt that it was, we needed to do the due diligence on the fire department side. So up until then, we were always just told that the fire departments were responsible for thirty thousand dollars of the cost to implement into the station. So we wanted to do, do the proper research on that to make sure that that was still the case. And our assessments were, was going to look at placement of the Station Alert Module, which you'll see a picture of, networking. So how does it connect back here to our servers so we can push out the information? As well as the peripherals, which means the, the lights in the ceiling that light up whenever the alert's triggered, the gamma signs that display the message. We wanted to do our homework on that piece of it. And we'll talk about that piece a little later on as well. So from our Greensboro site visit on 7/11, we, all departments thought that that was extremely beneficial. Again, we had the Town of Hope Mills, the City of Fayetteville, our team and our ITS team that attended that meeting. If Greensboro's listening, we appreciate the hospitality, it was extremely helpful. We toured two fire departments, one on the city side, one on the county side, as well as their 911 system or center. From that, we gathered that the fire departments and their IT departments all loved the system, had nothing negative to say about it. We also looked at something that they chose to do, which was relatively new, is the virtualization of their servers. We also talked about the workload that goes with managing this type of system, and they noted that they have a public safety IT division that handles doing all emergency 911 functions, as well as a radio division that handles their radio shop and reprogramming of their radios as needed. So here's a short video. We've talked a lot about how the system works and concept, but we wanted you to see how alert actually goes. So this is a live call from the City of Greensboro while we were visiting their station.
Fire alarm, south streets of South Alabama, James Street, Rosa Road, South Alabama.
So the, the initial little blurb that you hear is what they call Samantha in Greensboro, which is the voice that comes over the radio. So I'm sorry for the volume on this piece. You'll see this little gamma sign right here that illuminates the unit that is responsible for responding to the call. Another gamma sign displaying the call information. So as you can, may or may not be able to tell from the video, it's a pretty seamless system. You did not hear a lot of radio traffic. It's designed to get those firemen out of the door as quick as possible.
Fire alarm.
So based off the Greensboro visit, again, we decided that as a project management group, we needed to look into the virtual, virtualization of servers. Why? Because if the primary servers fail, it allows for a more rapid failover. There is a significantly lower cost without compromising quality. The maintenance is a lot easier on our ITS department, and it can be managed remotely a lot easier than a standard server. So again, the highlighted areas in the presentation is the cost as it stands now. So the updated quote for USDD was seventy thousand eight hundred and five dollars and seventy-five cent. And then after we received that quote, we met with yet another vendor because we still wanted to make sure that the VHF paging system was going to function properly. And on July 15th, we met with our typical radio vendor that we currently work with right now to maintain that equipment. And that was the first time during the entire process that we were confident that our VHF paging was not going to be impacted by the implementation of this new software. So revisiting the Clifdale Tower. This vendor, again, they had the same reaction as soon as they walked in, and they, they worked there constantly. And again, extreme heat and cold can shorten the lifespan of the components that are in there. We just, matter of fact, had to replace a VEO coder within that tower that cost us about two thousand dollars almost. And we think that could be partially attributed to the heat that's there because it happened right at a hot, very hot day. Another thing with the Clifdale Tower is if you look at the photos, you can see that there's light clearly coming through the eaves that indicate openness, as well as there's some holes in the walls that you can't see in this picture, that vermin could easily get in and chew up some wiring. So we're, some possible solutions that we're looking at is a self-contained cooling unit. I have on the presentation about fifteen thousand, but in talking with ITS, it could be upwards of thirty thousand, depending on what kind of features need to be incorporated in there. We have some challenges with that because all of our radio equipment is housed at the Clifdale Tower for the VHF paging. We work with a very generous third-party company that does not charge us a dime for our equipment to be housed there. They don't charge us a dime for the power. So going back to them and expressing our, our intent or our want to be able to put additional electrical components in there and seeing how that factors into the price of things, as well as we need to get an electrical engineer to look at that, and it doesn't include any taxes or labor that's associated with that. One thing I will note is that we could probably move forward with the Voice Dispatch process, installing the equipment that's needed out there, but very soon after, we need to be thinking about funding some type of remedy for this. Because unlike we do now, the, a critical component within the Voice Dispatch System will be now housed at the Voice, at the Clifdale Tower. And then failure of that singular component could make the whole system not work at all. So on July 22nd, we submitted our eligibility request to the 911 board, and then we received another quote from MCA because we refined, based off the Greensboro visit, what our system diagram looked like. And I'll show you a picture of that a little later. What we decided is, or what we found out by visiting Greensboro is, where we originally planned for two, or sorry, three garreries, which is their, how it integrates with our radio system, that we did not need three. We only actually needed two because each gary will do two radio channels. So based off that, we reduced the, the ads of the vendor to one, to two garreries, and then the cost of the radio consulate. And, and then they gave us twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars for the consulates, three of them, and then, or sorry, two of them. And then the labor for that wiring installation is about four thousand dollars. Additionally, we know that there, there will be additional radio costs because once US Digital Designs, once we sign that contract, they will give us a vendor checklist that we then have to provide to our vendors that tells them additional work that they need to do on the system. So July 15th through 30th, we conducted station assessments. We went, or ITS went to every single fire department that has requested the equipment, which is all of them. The pictures display the setup that we saw in Greensboro. So whenever we talk about ATX or the Station Alerting, that's that big box right here, which is actually what receives the signal from our, our system and pushes out the alert through the different peripherals at each fire department. Additionally, you will see that the fire departments have a cradle point up here. So in lieu of doing fiber to each one of the stations, which is extremely expensive, each one of them opted to do a cradle point in lieu of fiber. So here is a visualization of our updated schematic for how everything will integrate into our system. So we will have two garreries. One will be at the Clifdale Radio Tower, and then one will be at the radio shack or in the communication shelter at the Emergency Services Center. And then additionally, then we'll have the consulate at the Emergency Services Center. And then, was there additional consulate at, just all of them at the Emergency Services So on August the 4th, we received funding, or received notice of funding from the 911 board that said that they will fund the entire cost of the Voice Dispatch software and hardware. On August 5th, we coincidentally had a meeting with our 911 regional rep, and she told us that the radio cost associated was not emergency telephone system fund eligible. And I know originally, whenever we presented this, they were funding or going to fund about forty-five percent of the cost. That should have never happened. It said it was a lapse and they didn't catch it because the reason behind that is because the way in which we alert and radio out to our first responders, we use full consoles. The method in which we're going is a, is a consulate, which is an alternate alerting Additionally, if we were to go with the full console, it would exceed our allowable seat count, therefore not making it fundable. So where we currently sit right now, again, the seventy thousand eight hundred and five dollars seventy-five cent for the USDD software and hard, hardware, and then the twenty-five thousand six for the consulates, four thousand for the wiring. All those costs will be coming out of the general fund, and we've worked closely with budget, and we've made sure that all those proper budget amendments have been completed to take care of funding that. Going back to the fire department costs, we estimate, based off what the fire department state that they need, they will, it will cost between eighty-five and a hundred and seventy thousand, depending on the fire department. They could go back with the thirty thousand dollar version, but it's not going to get them as many peripherals and as much usability out of the system going with that smaller In summary, we have some continued gaps. Again, we talked about overall management of the system. Our existing Emergency Services staff is really taxed with the amount of duties and responsibilities that they have now, as well as ITS. There's a huge amount of backside management that goes into this system that we only found out by visiting Greensboro. Again, they have a whole public safety IT team dedicated to this function, going out to the fire departments to provide services for replacement of the batteries, for, or networking on the cradle point. So one thing to call, and Daniel may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, is the coverage saved Verizon at Beaver Dam is vastly different from the coverage that someone in City of Fayetteville proper would receive. So they may have to look at going somewhere like AT&amp;T or one of the other providers to get that full coverage that they need to communicate properly back with our servers. So that requires, you can't just use one APN or access point for all the providers. Each individual provider requires a different APN for that service. So there's time and manpower that goes into that, as well as the servers. Just to give you a breakdown or snapshot of where ITS currently stands, so what we call incremental functions is what is reimbursable by the 911 board to the county for our T, our IT department doing the work for us. So currently, what we submitted in FY23 was forty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars worth of eligible costs. Now, you'll see this list below it, RMS, ABL, Mobile Apps, General Network Support. That is not 911 board reimbursable. So that forty-eight thousand is just a portion or a fraction of the support that ITS really provides us. And then, of course, we talked about the gaps that we have at the Clifdale Tower. So the next steps, we received a version back from legal, just reviewing the terms of the contract, which we feel good about. We're waiting on the vendor to correct about three more things, and I think within or by the end of this week, we'll be moving into the contracting phase. So with that, I will say that this project is moving at a good pace. We're well ahead of schedule. I think I told you four months in the, the initial presentation, and the county manager looked at us and said, you better make it three, Gary. So we did that. We, we shortened it down, we're at two months right now. So I think staff has done significant amount of work with the ITS, or with our ITS department, our Emergency Services staff, in speeding this process along without compromising efficiency or quality. And with that, I'll take questions.
I don't know if I was that direct.
Whatever it was, it worked. Well, first, thank you for the very detailed briefing on this. I, I know you understand the importance of this process. Commissioner Tyson, you had a question, and I'll go to Commissioner Adams.
Thanks. Just really two things. One, on the, if you go back to your slide 12.
I should have numbered them.
The radio shelter at County Emergency Services, it shows that we're utilizing the Viper system and the 800 megahertz system. My question is, why would we maintain both of those standards if we could move everything over to Viper?
So I'll let Adam answer the technical questions. He's doing it.
That's a good question, Commissioner. Part of that is, right now, Fayetteville City operates on the Durham Fayetteville 800 megahertz core, and it's, it's both a redundancy and sort of a throughput issue. So if we have multiple calls at the same time, both, both county and city operators can talk at the same time. So this, the way this system is designed, because Fayetteville Fire runs mutual aid with County Fire so frequently, this picks up that piece as well. It, it works seamlessly with them. So for example, if there is a call in Vander's District and Engine 16 needs to respond to that, it'll automatically pick up that piece as well, without any input or need or extra burden on Fayetteville Dispatch for them. It'll also pick up their radio frequencies as well.
So the short answer is, we just need the city to move to Viper.
I'm not against that per se. It is a nice redundant system that we get to use in the case of a Viper outage. That is part of our backup radio plan right now. We don't have to pay a user fee for Viper, and right now, we don't pay a user fee for their system either. Redundancy is nice, but I don't disagree. I'm, I'm a big proponent of Viper in general, so.
And I'm glad you brought up outage because on the APN, and I think this probably will be a question for you, on the APN side, you know, if we're looking at doing this on a, on a cellular network, there's some risk there. Why would we not look at a solution like Starlink so all these sites could use that one solution? And then it's satellite-based, so if there's a power outage and the cellular goes down, we'll still be able to dispatch.
There are two answers to that question. Mr. Reiser may be able to answer this better than I can. You can have battery backup to help maintain the cradle points, but one of the, the benefits of the cradle points is they can have multiple SIMs in them. So if one of the network providers goes down, it automatically rolls over to the other provider. It also allows for a static IP, which is necessary for the, the... It also allows for a static IP, which is necessary for the system to work. I'm not familiar with Starlink enough. It may be able to provide a static IP as well, but cradle points have been successfully used. Starlink may be an option. I know we're in the process of using that for some of our backup at our Emergency Services Center, so that's definitely a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams.
Thank you for all of that. Lot of detail, lot of money, but my issue would be why, as we're doing this, we don't go ahead and do the Clifdale gaps? I mean, if they're telling me they're walking in there, it's hot and all of that, you put all of this in there, it doesn't really make sense if you don't go ahead and do that at the same time as we're moving forward to be able to close out those gaps on there.
We plan to go ahead and close that gap.
Okay, we won't do that, no. To me, it should be going at the same time.
Yeah, that'd be doing it at the same time. The biggest concern is like the heat.
Right.
And when it gets cold. And the batteries go quicker when it's cold. And so we definitely go add that on to the system.
Right, because there's going to be some costs in there, so I mean, you might as well go ahead and figure the costs in while you're doing it. The retrofit stuff is just a little bit harder.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, one thing that I'll mention while we're talking about the money piece of this, so. So at the beginning of this project, we were at $65,353 for the US Digital Designs piece. We're slightly above now on the county piece at $70,805, so a net increase of $5,452. But remember, there was additional $53,000 for the city piece. That is no more. By virtualization of servers, we took away that cost. Additionally, remember, we were talking about $29,600, or we're down $29,683 for the radio cost. So we have a net savings for the taxpayers of Cumberland County of $76,224.40.
That's why we need to do the gaps, so we don't end up losing it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, other questions or comments?
Commissioner Patel. Thank you, Mr. Campo, on the presentation. I did have one question, and, you know, anyone from Greensboro's listening, thank you too. When you were talking about if, once everything gets implemented, you may need your own IT support team full-time, what would be the size and scope of that? Like, how many FTEs, basically?
Probably four FTEs.
Is that full-time?
Yes, because they would be responsible for, and we can use them for other things too, but they would be responsible for all of the fire departments in the city and the county, so, and all the people, well, and their towns too. So we have an issue, we need to have people to deploy to those areas quick.
Commissioners, anything else? So one question from the chair, just the individual station. So we look at our volunteer fire departments. We went from $30,000, which was originally estimated, and I know it was an estimate, to between $85,000 and $170,000. So we communicated that through the Fire Chiefs Association to make sure that they're identifying that and beginning to look at funding mechanisms, and are we assisting with those funding mechanisms?
Yes, sir. Once we identified that, we let Chief Johnson know, as well as we announced it by email and at the Fire Chiefs Association meeting. The good thing about it is, remember, we're doing this project in two phases. The first phase is to make the radio or the voice come over the radio, and then the second phase is the implementation into every fire department. So again, we're looking at net FY before they would have to come up with that money, potentially.
Commissioner Tyson, you had something else?
Yeah, one more thing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for recognizing me. I know we've, you know, really targeted this on our fire first responders, but as we all know in first response, that seconds and minutes can save lives. Have we looked at this as any potential benefit for law enforcement partners or EMS partners in terms of being able to get them information faster as well?
So EMS has expressed interest in this system, and once we incorporate the fire departments, that would be our potential net space in looking at it. I'm not sure about the PD side of things. They haven't expressed any interest on that piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have anything, Commissioner?
No, I echo what Gary said.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. No action needed. We appreciate the update. Look forward to our next month's update as we continue to stay focused on this. Thank you. We'll move to item E, Cumberland County Local Reentry Council.
Yes, Courtney McCollum would present this item and answer the questions you may have. We reward $150,000 from NCDPS, and she's going to talk about how we implement that money and implement the grant and the reentry council. Courtney.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am here to present on our Cumberland County Local Reentry Council. We are very excited. Of course, this is a new venture under Cumberland County Government. It was established prior to us, but now we are considered the intermediary agency that administers the $150,000 from the Department of Public Safety. We wanted to provide transparency and show what that breakdown of that $150 is currently. Most of it is for our staff, which is mandated, which is a reentry coordinator, and also a case manager. Want to stop and just identify our local reentry council coordinator who is here today, Ms. Charlotte Raines, so just wave to everyone. And we also have a case manager who's currently today stationed at our NC Works Career Center. $8,200 of that dollars is for direct client supportive services, which includes basic needs, vocational training, housing, and transportation. So our local reentry council is made up of a network of individuals and agencies that have different backgrounds that provide services or have an interest in our justice-involved population. Within our local reentry council, we have an executive committee that are going to guide the decision-making for our LRC, and I apologize, Local Reentry Council, we abbreviate as LRC. And so that executive committee is made up of individuals who will be able to guide the decision-making for the LRC, which means the operation, design, and oversight of the council. The Cumberland County Government, of course, serves as that fiscal agent and administrative entity for the LRC. So we do reporting back to the Department of Adult Corrections or, excuse me, Public Safety. We also have our advisory committee, which will be our chairs of our subcommittees. Currently, we have three subcommittees, which will be employment, housing, and then also supportive services. Those individuals have a specialty or serve as the subject matter experts in those areas to help break down the barriers that our justice-involved individuals face. Also on here, it also talks about the duties and responsibilities of our two staff persons, the reentry coordinator and also our job placement specialist or case manager. So the purpose of the LRC is to assist individuals with criminal backgrounds of Cumberland County who are reentering society by providing supportive services and resources for a successful transition into the community. Persons who are eligible for reentry services are all individuals with criminal backgrounds, but there is a priority given to individuals who are immediately returning from incarceration. Individuals may be referred by probation officers, justice officials, family, community groups, and/or refer themselves. So the services that the LRC provide are job readiness, employment assistance, career development, supportive services. They also link individuals to community resources, referrals to vocational occupational skills training, and also provide each individual a road in individual case management. So we want to talk about the good things that have happened since we've hired our staff since March of this year. We have hired over 50 referrals, and as you can see, those referral sources are listed as well. Out of that 52, we have physically enrolled 19 individuals, so there may be a difference in that number, but I'm going to tell you why. So we have individuals who are referred from different agencies, and sometimes those individuals don't show up. It could be that they decided not to come back to Cumberland County, or they may have barriers that supersede the services that we can provide them. So a breakdown of the demographics of the 19 that we have actually enrolled, 19 of those individuals have been males, and 18 of those out of the 19 are non-Hispanics. We've also even broken down even more and told you about marital status and also age count. It looks like majority of the 19 individuals enrolled were of 35 years of age. Out of the 19 individuals that we have enrolled into LRC, 14 individuals are currently employed. So I would like to give kudos to my staff for working really hard, because we're talking about individuals who have multiple barriers. And so of that 14 that we have placed in employment, the average hourly rate is $15.81. And then you can also see in this bar chart is the industry in which those 14 people went into. The bar chart shows the services that the LRC has provided, and most of those services that we have provided is in employment. So that is a big barrier for individuals who are justice-involved. They want to come back into the community, get a job so that they can be self-sustainable. So talking about sustainability, so of course, under the Cumberland County Government, this is a new initiative for us, and we are really, really excited. And as we work through our processes for our LRC, of course, we're talking about enhancements. And so in the future, we'll be coming back to help and give you an even bigger report about all the great things that we're doing, but we have identified and are going to continue to look at things that we may need in the future. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up that peer support specialists are very important to this population. Peer support individuals are those who have lived experience, and if you have not lived as incarcerated person, sometimes it causes us a barrier for people who have not done it to walk and show them how to overcome some of those barriers. And so we want to incorporate peer support specialists in our programming. Housing options currently, I know that there's a lot of talk about it, but there is a shortage, but there's an extreme shortage for individuals who have barriers, and one of those barriers being a criminal background, especially for our sex offender participants. Talking about transportation options, of course, we have fast, but we want to expand shared rides and just company-designed transportation. So with the 14 people that we have employed, a lot of them work at full-line distribution, for example. And so sometimes the transportation to get there is extremely hard. So if we have maybe five people going to the same location, coming back at the same time, how do we make that work for our population? And then also just transitional jobs and vocational training. Some individuals are incarcerated for 20 years and don't necessarily have the skillset in order to get a livable wage job. And so if we can expand our services in providing vocational, hands-on, certified skills, then hopefully we can move them into a job that pays much more than that. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions on this presentation by Sherman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate serving on the JCPC Board. But I do have a question in regards to, you said 19 individuals right now that are utilizing the, if you go back to your screen, you stated that 19 of your, just your participants or participating that are male. What about the females? Do you all have any females enrolled at this time? I know we certainly have, unfortunately, several women that are in prison here in Cumberland County and also in the Raleigh detention, so I was just curious about that number, like, what's being done for the case management for the women? Do you all have any women in your program?
So currently, we do not have any women enrolled, but what our staff is working on, they are having meetings with chief probation officers, also doing workshops at the NC Works Career Center. We're very engaged, of course, with DPS to give us a list of those individuals who are being released. So we just haven't had any females in the last quarter of fiscal year yet, but we anticipate with us marketing also, now that we have formed our LRC, which just started meeting this month, we just had an executive committee meeting a couple weeks ago, and our first official Cumberland County LRC meeting will be August the 26th. So we're going to use that group to get the word out there. We're here, and we're providing those services.
I would like a follow-up then, and I appreciate that you all are doing a little bit more to promote so that we can make sure that the women that are in need of a second chance. So I look forward to a 30-day, you know, follow-up on what you all are doing to collaborate in the women's prisons and to see about making sure that these services are provided for our ladies here in Cumberland County that need a second chance as well, please. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, other questions? Couple of questions from the chair. Who's currently serving on the LRC?
So the overall LRC is made up of different community organizations.
Was that the snapshot that was on there earlier, at the very bottom of your?
One second. It's just pretty much a summary of those individuals. It doesn't tell the exact names of those people or the organizations that they represent, but I can definitely get that to you.
Okay. So if we get who's on the LRC. And then, as you, we're talking about your additional needs, how are we looking to partner with nonprofits and organizations within our community that are doing a lot of that? For example, we fund, as a county, the HOPE Program at FTCC. What's our connection point to the HOPE Program, which this body funds for enhancements to job skills and those types of things? So do we have, is there, are we actively looking at the nonprofit resources or partner resources that could fill the needs that you're looking for as your next steps?
So yes, sir. So we hope, and again, since this is our first LRC meeting in August, we're hope to bring all those individuals together. We're going to have pretty much crucial conversations to say, what do you have available? How can we leverage our services so that we can provide intentional help to these individuals? So again, just because this, we are setting the foundation now. And so getting out, talking to different organizations, staff has set up several meetings that have been occurring in the last 30 days to figure out exactly what's available so that, one, we're not duplicating services, and how we provide that directly to those community resources.
And the connection points from the previous councils that were in place, do we have kind of lessons learned or anything like that from any of the previous councils that were in place?
We have a few.
Okay.
Yes.
Vice Sherman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So you are, it sounds like you're laying the foundation. Is this going to be somewhat of a, with your chart here for the local reentry council for those that are listening, which is the LRC, it sounds like a stakeholder meeting? Is that what's going to, is that fair to say that in these particular areas, like I noticed you have service providers, reentry coordinator, job placement, you all have been having, I guess, individual meetings with different organizations and leaders? And for the meeting, I want to understand this correctly, this coming up September, that is when you anticipate on having these individuals that can provide some of these services?
That's correct. So that goes back to Chair mentioning lessons learned from previous council. So we are using some of those agencies that were once on that LRC when it was under a different IA, and trying to build this new capacity within Cumberland County. So we're having those individual conversations, and then we are inviting them to join the LRC, so then we can collectively talk about exactly what resources are available and the leverage there is.
And do you all have a tentative date set for this meeting?
Yes, it is August the 26th. It is at 11 o'clock. It is at DSS.
I'll try to attend that meeting. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right, thank you for the update. We look forward to a follow-up once you get more established and move in as a key part of how we also grow our workforce here as well, and move people back into our community. All right, we'll go ahead and move to item F, Health Department Update.
Yes, Dr. Jennifer Green will present this item and answer any questions you may have, giving an update on family childcare rules and substance use strategic alignment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Courtney and I did not coordinate on our presentations, but hers queued up perfectly, and I think we'll connect some dots between our and I think we'll connect some dots between our departments and so hopefully we'll thread the needle there. So first, but before we do that, a quick update on our implementation of our family childcare rules. So our, in addition to our county commissioners, the Health Department is governed by our local Board of Health and the general statutes allow our local Board of Health to set public health rules that can help to govern public health rules in our community. And so the public health rules and the Board of Health may set a rule that can require people to take certain actions to protect public health. Those rules can be more stringent than the state rules, but it requires some additional public notification, hearings and some additional requirements for rulemaking. So last fall, our Board of Health set a rule for family childcare homes and those were proposed during our August Board of Health meeting of last year. These rules are really important because the last time those rules were updated was in two thousand and eight. So there were significant rules that were out of date that are outside of our childcare facilities. So many people are, our larger childcare facilities have rules that are governed by the state, but our local rules for family childcare homes, so the in-home daycares has not, have not been updated since two thousand and eight. So our staff did a review of those family childcare home rules. They updated those to match best practices around definitions, make them align a little bit better with our childcare center rules around temperature controls, diapering, sanitary conditions, pest control, and to make sure that we were following the best and latest and greatest around state guidance. Those rules were adopted and approved in October twenty twenty-four for an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-five. So we wanted to come back to you all to provide an update on the things that we've done. Since the rules were implemented, our environmental health staff did some training for our family childcare providers, our family childcare homes to get their questions, feedback, some technical assistance for those individuals. We also have two childcare health consultants on staff, one nurse and one child, and one health educator that can go out and do some technical assistance in their homes for those facilities. That's non-enforcement related, so a friendly visit just to say what can we do to help and support. So those staff have been available to help our family childcare homes get up to speed. So far, because of the training of our staff and our childcare health consultants, they have not had any enforcement action to date, but we're continuing to monitor as they do their, their site visits and do their enforcement visits. So I'll pause there to see if there's any questions about that part before I move on to our substance use and then a health update.
Commissioners, any questions? Hearing none, if you'll go ahead and continue, Dr. Green.
All right. So as Courtney mentioned, there's a lot of moving parts around our substance use response in our community. And I wanted to provide an update for the commissioners, but also to the community about how these pieces align. We have a lot of different grants, a lot of federal funding, a lot of local dollars, state dollars. And so we've been very strategic to make sure we are aligning and not duplicating an effort. So one, just to kind of zoom out just a bit and provide some big picture, the, we've done a lot of strategic planning around our community response to our opioid crisis. And so in twenty twenty-two, we did listening sessions, some town halls, some rapid needs assessment. We repeated that in twenty twenty-four, or fall of twenty twenty-four, and we used that to develop a strategic plan around our opioid response. And then in addition, we take into account that, of course, this board has done some strategic planning and we want to make sure those efforts align with your priorities. And so of course, your priorities include enhancing public safety and enhancing health and wellness. And then our Board of Health also has priorities around expanding our access to substance use services that they completed during their strategic planning process. And then, of course, we do our community health assessment and that also, one of the primary priorities of that, of that assessment was mental health and substance use. So you can see there's a theme here, right, of around mental health and substance use that we want to make sure that we are helping to address and coordinate and making sure that those things are in alignment and not duplicating one another. So we also know that there are several coalitions that exist to help enhance or address these issues. So Courtney mentioned one of them, the reentry council. Commissioner Jones, of course, sits on JCPC. We have C-4, our Cumberland Fayetteville opioid response team. Alliance has a crisis collaborative. And so, and there's, and there's others. But we want to make sure that we are coordinating our response. So the Health Department has staff that sit on each of those, including the, we have a member of the Health Department staff that's on Courtney's executive council for the LRC and to make sure that we are not sort of stepping on each other's toes and we're getting the most bang for our buck, if you will. In addition, during our opioid settlement funds, our strategic planning process, we created a report and that report is currently under review right now. The commissioners, you all approve those funds for option A and option B strategies. So our option B strategies are currently under review and we hope to have that back from the state by September. And then as we completed a sequential intercept mapping process in January, we currently have that report on our website that folks can go and take a look at. I have it just as snapshot here, but, and we created two maps. It's a, it's a snapshot, but I promise for folks that are listening, it's online and you can go look at it. But I want to highlight a couple of things that I thought that Courtney brought up that are, will not be a surprise to any of you, but right here along the bottom, the housing for sex offenders came up as a priority and some of those, and those that have a criminal justice background. Employment and temporary shelter, those recovery support services, peer support services shows up along the bottom of things that we need in our community. So as Courtney's team works and our team works, we want to make sure that we're collaborating. Reentry is right here on Intercept four. This map really sort of takes us a walkthrough of how community services for folks that are involved in the criminal justice system, how they walk through the system from the community, through law enforcement engagement, engagement with our hospital system and emergency services, our court hearings, their detention center, if you go to prison or jail, our specialty courts, which are housed under Courtney's team, all the way back to reentry and then community corrections, including probation and parole. We have one of these for our adults and then we have one of these for our youth and that helps us to identify where we have gaps in services. So one of our aims is to make sure that we are braiding these local, state and federal dollars together so that we have all of these different funding pots and, and as you know, in government that require, comes with some rules and requirements, but we want to make sure that we're leveraging opportunities. So we have our opioid settlement funds that helps fund some community-based projects, our recovery resource center that funds a little bit of Courtney's team for our family drug treatment court, our detention center, our medication for opioid use disorder, some of our naloxone distribution. We also have a federal grant from SAMSA that allows us to do first responder education and training around overdose prevention and helping to make sure that we are getting our barber shops trained, our, our first responders, including our nurses, our faith-based institutions, that all falls within our federal funding. And then we have a, our Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant that supports our SIM task force that is working to intervene in some of those key areas that you just saw on the map. That also supports expansion of LEED or Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program at Fayetteville PD and then also doing some criminal justice system diversion. And then finally, we have some American Rescue Plan funds that will help to fund some K through twelve overdose prevention education that will hopefully kick off. We're working on, our staff brought their training teachers and staff this week and then we'll start with our young people hopefully later this fall. And so lots of different projects going on, but we want to make sure that those things are working in alignment. We also have, we often get asked about our tobacco funding. We have, we've lost some of our federal CDC funding, but we have some dual settlement funds to help maintain some of that work. And our shift in focus because of that, the funding source has shifted really around to youth vaping prevention. And then we often get asked about how the interaction of maternal health and substance use comes about because we often have moms and families that are experiencing substance use and mom is pregnant or somebody in the family's home is pregnant. So that is a subcommittee of C-4 and they are working overall to improve our maternal health outcomes, but with a special focus on our substance use prevention as they help those families that are at high need to get the resources that they need. So that's just a quick overview of some of the projects that we have going on and how those things align. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Commissioners, questions for Dr. Green? Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question. You may or may not know the answer. I noticed when you were stating in regards to sex offenders, there used to be a program, of course, is no longer when Cumberland County Mental Health used to run things before Alliance that was nine-bed facility for sex offenders. My understanding, there's only two, the Cannon Hill Treatment, which is in Rayford, and I do believe that there's one called Sand Hills Sex Offenders Treatment. Are we doing any type of collaboration with those two now that the nine-bed facility has been dismantled that was here in Cumberland County?
I am not familiar with either one of those facilities, but I will follow up and take and get back to you about that. That's an area that we'll, we'll have to do a little bit more explaining, but I will follow up with you on that question.
Okay. And Courtney, are you familiar, because that would come underneath juvenile justice?
Yes, I am familiar. But if I'm not mistaken, it is area limited, so although it is classified as sex offender house, there's only like two beds. And there is a high turnover and those individuals are usually in some kind of treatment and so they're there for more than ninety days.
For the one that's in Rayford?
Yes.
And then the other one, Sand Hills, can you all just do research and see what we can do for collaboration since we did have a very effective system here, but that's been a while when things changed over to Alliance. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. We'll follow up with you.
Commissioner Faircliff, direct.
I don't, I don't know if this is tangential, tangential to the discussion or not, but since we're on the subject of sex offenders, I know, I know there are parameters by which sex offenders cannot locate within certain, what, thousand feet of a school or this, that. I'm not asking about that one, but are there any provisions against multiple sex offenders occupying one residence?
Courtney? Not that I'm aware of. I think that has been a strategy that has been, in our SIM task force meetings, that has been discussed. And is there a singular place where we might provide housing for an individual and could that be in a group setting? I'm not aware of any limitations on that.
Are there any, to follow up on that, are there any group settings that Cumberland County is responsible for or under the auspices of Cumberland County?
I'm not aware of any that the county provides or funds. And so I think that's been the placement of individuals, even if, so we provide some recovery housing, but if somebody has a criminal justice background, that's been a challenge for us. So in some ways, so for example, our opioid settlement funds can provide some recovery housing, but if somebody has a background, a criminal justice background that is significant or has a sex offender background, even if we have the dollars, there might not be the location to place that person. And that's been a recurring challenge for, for us as we're trying to put people in retreat, place people for treatment and then recovery housing when they get out there. So I'm not aware of any county-funded homes that we have available now.
Thank you for that. And I'm not asking just out of curiosity. I've had a school official ask, pose that sort of a question to me and I'm kind of background investigating that at the moment, so.
I think that's why you saw that on our list and Courtney's list. Exactly.
Anything else, Commissioner Faircliff?
No, thank you.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can probably help answer that question.
Yes, ma'am.
There is none anymore. There used to be like a stated, Cumberland County Mental Health, when it was ran by the county, had an excellent program. I know from just being a former supervisor there and it was for juveniles from the ages, that's when you used to have, you know, back in the day, there was the, I can't even think of the name that was in Raleigh, the major mental health institution that they had there and it was a step-down for youth from ages of nine to sixteen and some, Dorothea Dix. And so you would go from Dorothea Dix as a step-down Cumberland County, which was excellent and it was a secured facility and you'd stay for a year before that you can make that re-transition back with your family. But that is no longer because again, that was ran, of course, no doubt, through Cumberland County when Cumberland County Mental Health was in charge of mental health. But now things have been prioritized to private sector of Alliance, but it was a very good program of which was why I was asking, was there anything else in place? But it is not. That's why I was wondering if the next two closest treatments for sex offenders would be Sand Hills Treatment that you all do research on and that of the other Cannon Hills, which is in Rayford.
Yep. We'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tyson, direct.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Green. One question I had, it kind of ties back in, back to the opioid response team. There was an article recently in City View talking about STI rates in Cumberland County and the percentage of them. And your staff member was quoted as saying that y'all were doing some coordination with Cape Giraffe Valley Health and Fayetteville Cumberland Opioid Response Team.
Yes.
Can you talk about specifically what those efforts are and then in general, what efforts we're making to kind of curb this issue as well?
Yes. So those two things are very closely linked. We've been, I love the question, we've been getting it all week. And so, but that's a great question because those two teams, our STI staff, work very closely with C-4. So for example, we were doing naloxone distribution out in the community this week and last week. So members of that team also go out. So as we make a touch point around treatment and recovery and opioid response, there's a person that can also say, hello, I'm from the Health Department and can connect people back to services. We also work with the other providers, so Piedmont Health Services and our own staff to do testing at our Recovery Resource Center. And then we also have a hepatitis C, Burge counselor or staff that work in our hepatitis program that work very closely with C-4 so that when they do NTC harm reduction, so when their staff go out, that we have our materials and supplies available to the citizens that they see. So we do a lot of referrals back and forth because those, those conditions mean very linked.
So on the, if I may, Commissioner, as a follow-up, on the, where there's not overlap on some of the conditions where it's not, they're not joined, talk to us about those efforts a little bit, too.
So we also do a lot of partnership with our colleges and universities. So we will, we work with, for example, Piedmont Health Services to help cover some of those. So we'll do outreach and testing events on their campuses. So at all, FTCC, Methodist and Fayetteville State, our teams will go out and do testing. We'll also do some prevention education. Our Health Education Division will go and do some classes with their students. We also are part of our HIV task force. So the HIV task force helps to kind of coordinate what everybody's doing, stepping on everybody's toes. And then we also will, we've put some money and dollars into media campaigns. We also have, we had some funding from the General Assembly that allowed us to launch some rapid, rapid STD testing. So we implemented that about two years ago and that's helped us to reduce our testing, reduce our STD rates here. So yes, we are still higher than other counties in the state, but we've made progress in reducing those because of the investment in public health dollars.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Jones, direct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad that Commissioner Tyson mentioned that point. So have the numbers went up or down for STD rates in regards to that? Because many times individuals, no doubt, have substance abuse and mental health problems and other issues would risk it being very sexually active. This is question number one. And question number two, sometimes it's in this report, but it wasn't in there at this time. The rate was very high with teen pregnancy and pregnancy in general, with teens for Cumberland County, was it a very high number? Has that decreased in twenty twenty-five or can you just give me a little small?
Yes. So both of our, both our teen birth rates and our STI rates have decreased. We still remain higher than some of our counterparts, but both of those numbers have fallen. And then, you know, it varies a little bit by which STD you're talking about, but I'll highlight a few. Our chlamydia and gonorrhea rates have gone down pretty significantly. Our HIV rates are, are much harder to budge on because, one, there's, there's fewer cases of those. So when you talk about changing the rate, it, it just takes a little bit more time. But our chlamydia and gonorrhea rates have gone down significantly. And I'll have to, I can follow up with you, the exact number, I can't recall it directly off the top of my head. But that was part of our, our Board of Health strategic plan and so we wanted to make sure that we are getting, increasing the testing, increasing the treatment so that we can see those rates to start to fall.
And then teen pregnancies?
And same, I'm sorry, and same thing with teen pregnancy. Still, we see wide health disparities. That's true here in Cumberland County, that's true around the country, but our teen birth rate continues to fall. But our teen birth rate continues to fall. And we do, we work with our school district to do some prevention education. We do prevention education with our, with some of our Parks and Rec. And then within our clinic, we have a teen clinic at the Health Department where we can serve young people. And then we also have an adolescent parenting program so we can help prevent those second pregnancies.
Thank you. Anything else, Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Green? Dr. Green, as always, we appreciate the information and the updates.
Thank you. We'll follow up with you on those other items.
Thank you. And board, we've been going for a little over an hour and 45 minutes, so I'm going to go ahead and take a 10-minute recess and let people stretch their legs. We're at recess for 10 minutes. Please be back in 10 minutes. We will start.
We adjourn the meeting from recess and we'll go ahead and move forward to item four, consideration of agenda items, induction of 2025 Agricultural Hall of Fame nominee, Assistant County Manager Phillips.
Absolutely. Thank you Chairman. Lisa Childers, our Cooperative Extension Director, is here to present those items and answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners and staff. The Cumberland County Hall of Fame was established in 1989 by the Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners, and the purpose was to recognize a county resident that has made a significant contribution to agriculture. The Cumberland County Hall of Fame Committee met on August 5th and unanimously selected Betty Green as our 2025 inductee. Just to tell you about, a little bit about Ms. Green, she served as a 4H agent for 18 years, and as you know, 4H is very closely aligned with our agricultural community. She's made huge impacts on countless young people through different programs that she established. A lot of those programs are now used statewide through 4H. Lots of agricultural education programs she initiated through our schools. She established 4H programs at Fort Bragg, and those still exist today, and she founded our Leaders Association that has been replicated in so many other counties across the state. And so, our request today is that this be approved and moved to our consent agenda.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to say that I'm truly in favor of Ms. Green. She had me out years ago judging 4H contests and had these kids from our community doing 4H way before anybody else did it around the state, and not the fact that she's a North Carolina Central graduate also, so I gotta put that out there, let you know that. But, she didn't just do it for other people's kids, she did it for her own kids too. They were really instrumental in 4H. I think she lived, she was living over in Rafe and still came over here and did some of the things that were here. She was just a phenomenal person doing that, and I would highly recommend. Thank you so much for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve the induction of Ms. Betty A. Green into the Cumberland County Agricultural Hall of Fame to be placed as an item of consent for the August 25th, 2025 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting.
Second. We have a motion for the induction of Ms. Betty Green for the Agricultural Hall of Fame. It's been seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? If not, I will ask for your vote. Please raise your right hand, affirmative.
Unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll go ahead and move to item B, membership to local Chamber of Commerce. County Manager Greer?
Yes, I'm here. Attorney Attorney of the Board will discuss this item and answer any questions you may have.
I was asked to do some research on looking at the other local chambers of commerce as being our members for the Fayetteville Chamber. I contacted Hope Mills and they provided their rates, and I've included those in the packet. I did reach out to Spring Lake, which is the Greater Sandhills Chamber. From what we can tell, they are not active. Their website is no longer able to be accessed, and every phone number we called went to someone else or was never answered. Shaw Day from PIO assisted me in trying to reach someone, and we were never able to reach anyone for Spring Lake.
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Vice Chairman.
They're actually called the Sandhills. They are active. I'll be glad to give you all the information. They had a change in their name, but they are very active, and they look forward to us looking at that information to be members.
Shaw Day and I, we tried to find them.
They just had a name change. I'll give you the information.
Okay, thank you.
It's called Sandhills.
Commissioners, discussion, recommendation, was there a price for the Hope Mills?
For Hope Mills, it's $300 for the year.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Faircloth?
I have a question. I'm looking at nonprofit organizations, $100.
They're hoping to get us, but right now, we are in the 300 rate, but we may be able to get into the $100 rate. It'll be between 1 and 300.
We're not a large business. We are nonprofit?
We're trying. Right, we're, it's between, the most it will be is $300. It went down from 500 last year to possibly 300.
Yeah, you do.
Yes.
Okay, how much do we pay for Fayetteville? I'm sorry, how much do we pay for Fayetteville?
$5,000.
$5,000, okay.
That's what I'm saying.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized. If the Chair will, I'm ready to make a motion on this.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Commissioner Patel, entertain a motion.
I think it'd be a benefit for the county to continue supporting more of our chambers, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the, to ask the Board, the Board to approve membership to the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce and move this item to the August 25th, 2025 agenda as consent agenda item.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to approve membership to the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce and move it forward to the consent agenda on August 25th. Any discussion or comments on the motion? Vice Sherman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to also add that if we get the correct information from Spring Lake, now that we know there's a name change, that, and the benefits in the same price range, that they be included for a membership for the 25th agenda as well.
We did speak to Spring Lake last year. They're being with 3,000. I will verify what it is this year.
Thank you. Apparently, it's been a big major change. I know that for a fact that being that that's part of my district in there, trying to figure out why myself and Mr. Faircloth aren't members, it's definitely not 3,000 anymore. It's more like Hope Mills now.
So, if we could, if we could, Vice Sherman, we get the information, and then we could bring that back to the meeting as an item of business or move it forward, so we can facilitate it and just go ahead. We have the Hope Mills information. We've got a motion on the table. If that's acceptable. So, we're going to bring back the information, not as part of this motion.
Yes.
I mean, I can give it to you in two minutes. I've got it pulled up now. That's why I was, I could just email it to her. I would really like for us to move forward. We're both, we're going to do Hope Mills. I'm just saying, if Andrea gets information today, and the price is the same, we could just move forward with it. I've already emailed her.
Commissioner Adams?
Mr. Chairman, I would say if they do that, just add it on to our regular, our monthly meeting as an addition to that.
That's certain enough.
And we can hear it then.
So, we can bring it back as a regular item of business. So, bring back the Hope Mills' consent and bring back Spring Lake as a regular item of business. Is that acceptable to modify your motion? Vice Chair, does that meet your?
That's fine.
All right. Hearing no other questions or comments, I'll ask for your vote on the modified motion, so we are going to move forward with the Spring, or excuse me, the Hope Mills Chamber to the consent agenda, and we'll bring back the Spring Lake Southern, or Sandhills Chamber to item of business on the 25th as well. I ask for your vote. Please raise your hand in the affirmative.
Unanimous.
Yes.
All right. We'll go ahead and move to item C, Cumberland County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding allocations for July 1 through June 30, 2026. County Manager Greer?
Excuse me, I'll go to this side a little bit. You're in my bad ear, so most of what you say, I can't hear. That's not your problem.
We'll get you, we'll get you a little mic right over here. So, we'll go ahead and move forward to the juvenile crime prevention funding allocations for this FY.
Yes, Heather Skins, Assistant County Manager, and Courtney McCollum, Justice Services Director, will present the item and answer any questions you may have regarding the JCPC funding for this upcoming fiscal year. Heather?
Thank you, and good afternoon. As indicated, I do have Courtney McCollum, the Justice Service Director, here for any questions, and Dr. Green, who is the Chair for the Finance Committee for JCPC. The Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Funding Plan is submitted annually to the Board of Commissioners for approval prior to submitting to the State Division of Adult Correction and Juvenile Justice. The funding plan was originally reviewed by the Finance Committee on May 6, 2025, and submitted and approved by this Board on May 19. However, we needed to make some changes to that funding plan after the approval of this Board. Those changes were changing community care status to undetermined, as they have not accepted the funding through the State Office, and changing local in-kind matches due to the funding being lower than the original request in the Provider's response to the RFP. The funding plan was submitted to the Board of Commissioners for consideration on June 12, at which time it was tabled. Without the funding plan approved and submitted by June 30, 2025 deadline, the Providers that have accepted their allocations are not able to receive any reimbursement for services provided on or after July 1, 2025. This has presented a hardship to our Providers. Additionally, the County is not able to draw down their reimbursement. Staff are requesting that JCPC funding plan be approved and placed on the consent agenda for August 25, 2025, at the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, and I'll accept any questions. And again, I've got Dr. Green and Ms. McCollum here for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions on this item? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Just a point of order question for the Chairman. If the Board had tabled this, would we need to make a motion to move it off the table?
I would have to go look at the minutes and see, Madam Clerk, if we, if it was actually a tabled, or that's just a commentary that we're saying. Did we take action that day?
My recollection is that Vice Chair Jones indicated that this item would be tabled until August.
There's a distinct, there's a distinct difference, because if we, if we need to move it, then it's a three-fourths vote versus a majority vote. So, without objection, Board, without objection, I'm going to move this item off the table for, for action at this meeting. So, moved, so the motion, the item is off the table now, and now it's eligible for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the point of order. Any other questions on this? Commissioner Adams?
And I just ask this question, because I see that most everybody else has local cash match or local in-kind, and for the FAC and the JAC, it's unconfirmed. Does that mean there are going to be some local match, I mean, some, a local in-kind? Because I thought that was part of what you do. You had to have a local in-kind and a local match.
So, they do have local in-kind match for their JCPC funds. It is not completed on this document because they've not submitted formally, because they've not accepted the dollars.
So, before that signing, they have to do, it'll show the in-kind.
So, signing this will allow the other six Providers to receive reimbursement, and then we will resubmit a funding plan with community cares on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the clarification, Commissioner Adams. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from Vice Sherman Jones?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the Juvenile Counsel Prevention Council, DAC, JJ County Funding Request for the fiscal year of 2025 to 2026, and that also the item be moved to the consent agenda of the Board of Commissioners' meeting for August 25, 2025.
Second motion.
There's a motion to approve the JCPC funding request for the next FY. It's been properly seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Please raise your hand in the affirmative.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move to item D, informal bid award for professional auditing services and approval of FY 25 contract for professional auditing services. County Manager Greer?
Yes, this is the annual audit contract that needs to be approved by the Board. Robin Coontz, Finance Director, CFO, will present this item and answer any questions you may have. Robin?
Thank you. Good afternoon. So, in addition to approval of the audit contract, this was the first year of a three-year term where we went out for audit services by bid this year, because our audit service contract ended at fiscal year in 2024. So, the first part of this presentation is to share the results of that bid process with you. The process was conducted. We had two proposals that were received, and they were both evaluated based on the criteria that was in the RFP. Cherry Beckett, LLP, who was our previous auditor, they were the highest scorer overall. So, Cherry Beckett has proposed a contract cost for the next three fiscal years, beginning fiscal year in 2025, at $127,850 for year one, $134,245 for year two, and $140,955 for year three. This will also include the single audit program audits that has to be part of that. They are going to cover nine major programs through that amount, that cost. If for some reason they have to do additional programs on top of those nine, there will be an additional $7,000 surcharge for each additional program that has to be audited. And just to put that in perspective, as far as costs compared to prior year, this is an increase from last year's audit fee by $2,850. They also audit the Tourism Development Authority, the TDA, and the cost recommended for, or proposed for those to cover that audit in year one is $7,750, year two, $8,140, and year three, $8,545. And there was no change in the audit cost for the TDA audit between fiscal year in '24 and fiscal year in '25. And so, with your permission, we would like to ask for your approval at this meeting, and I just ask that we could, rather than sending this to the Monday night meeting, if we can get approval and signatures at this meeting, that would be wonderful. It will help us, you know, save a week in kicking off some of our processes with Cherry Beckett. But, we would need approval from the Commissioners to award RFP 2537-FIN to Cherry Beckett LLP, based on best overall value standard of award, and then also, we are requesting approval of the fiscal year 2025 audit contract and engagement letter with Cherry Beckett LLP, which would be signed by our Chairman, our Audit Committee Commissioner, which is Commissioner Faircloth, and also our TDA Board Chairperson. And then the engagement letter will be signed by Chairman Debbie Hare.
Any questions on this item from the Commissioners or comment? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Ms. Coontz, I wanted to thank you for presenting this to the Finance Committee earlier this week, and I know that there was a question that I had, and that you had answered very well, and I just wanted to see if we could reiterate that, just so that if the other Board members had shared that concern, that they would know what that was about. That related to our audit from last year that revealed our shortage and kind of that process, and how we were revealed that we had overpaid for that from PWC?
Yes.
And just, can you just walk the Board through that really quick, just so everybody kind of is on the same page?
Sure. So, I think what initiated that, that question from Commissioner Tyson and Finance Committee was just a concern that, did our audit team last year miss something as part of that audit before we award another contract to them, to make sure that we, there was nothing that was missed, because we did have a KPI that had to be reported to the LGC at the end of our audit last fiscal year. And so, the response to that was that there's nothing that, there was nothing at all material in what was, we had to report to the LGC. There's nothing that would be found under normal audit procedures. However, at the end of the audit, once we have financial statements and we have a set of good numbers that we know we're finalizing in our report, there is a large spreadsheet that we dump all these numbers into, and it just kicks out, this is a LGC, Local Government Commission, LGC spreadsheet, that kicks out all these performance indicators, and one of the things that they check is to make sure your enterprise funds are self, you know, maintaining their, covering their own expenses. There wasn't an overage, or was it something that came down that was high enough that we had to respond to that? And at the time, Amanda and I were working through that together. We had some, we kind of felt like we knew what was going on, but we didn't want to quite say it at that point in time. We thought there were some issues with the, with the charges from PWC, but we didn't necessarily write that way, because we weren't 100% sure at the time. So, at the time the report went in, we alluded to that, but in the end, it turned out that it actually was the case, and so there is not an issue with that enterprise fund at all. And it was not an issue with the work that Cherry Beckett did. It was just that KPI spreadsheet at the end of the process that we do every year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from Commissioner Faircloth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did I understand you to say that you need approval at this meeting?
I would really appreciate approval at this meeting. I'd like to have another meeting in the morning with the Otters.
If it'd be the Board's pleasure, then I would move that we award RFP number 25-37-FIN to Cherry Beckett LLP, based on the best overall value standard of award, and that we approve of the fiscal year, fiscal year 2025 audit contract and engagement letter with Cherry Beckett-Holland LLP.
Is there a second?
Yes.
We have a motion to award the RFP to Cherry Beckett, along with audit contract and engagement letter as well. That's been properly seconded. Are there any questions or comments on this motion? And this is to approve for today. Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Please raise your hand in the affirmative.
Unanimous.
I guess I have to vote too. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to item E, Homeless Prevention and Stabilization Voucher Program.
Yes, I, yes, Ty Woll, Chief of Staff, will present this item for this pilot program.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So, this afternoon, I'm seeking your consideration and approval to implement a pilot voucher program aimed at providing short-term, flexible assistance to individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at imminent risk of homelessness here in Cumberland County. This program prioritized individuals and families recently displaced or in emergency situations. Throughout the month of July, management staff, COC leadership, as well as the Chair and Vice Chair, met to discuss options to support the unhoused and those at risk of becoming unhoused. Staff was tasked to create a voucher program and was directed to bring a framework for implementation to the full Board for consideration. You have a copy of the draft guideline in front of you, but in brief, the voucher program would provide time-limited rental assistance, offer one-time support for utilities, cover limited transportation costs such as bus tickets to relocation to stable housing, and to serve as a gap-filling tool to stabilize households when other funding sources are unavailable or delayed. Staff is proposing that the program be administered by the Community Development Department in coordination with the coordinated entry process. This will ensure that referrals are prioritized and documented appropriately. Payments will be made directly to landlords, utility providers, or transportation vendors to mitigate the risk of misuse. Priority will be given to families with children, but all eligible low-to-moderate income individuals experiencing or at risk of homelessness are able to be served as funding levels permit. The pilot program is proposed to be funded with $250,000 drawn from budgeted funds previously approved by the Board for community to development supportive housing initiatives within the ARC Freedom Capacity General Fund. No additional appropriation is requested at this time. I'm requesting that the Board approve the implementation of the Homeless Prevention and Stabilization Voucher Program, utilizing $250,000 of previously approved ARC Freedom General Fund capacity for community to development use, and that this item be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners August 25, 2025, regular meeting as a consent agenda item, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Woll? Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
I just have one. Most of us pretty good. Mine's on the transportation issue, and it's, your transportation is travel to support permanent housing reunification. But, within the county, for people to get to coordinated entry, to get to here, to get to there, it's an impediment. So, why is there not some funds for local transportation, whether it's bus passes, Uber, or whatever? I understand what that part is for, is if somebody wants to go back home, and that's great. But, I think that when you're trying to get around this particular county, you need some funds for that local transportation. Coordinated entry is in one place, your housing may be in another, utilities may be in another. So, can we do something on the transportation that there, all of it's not just to move people, but for some local transportation also?
Yes, sir. We can definitely include that into the guideline. I did not include it in the guideline, because we do do that as a department. We just fund it through another source, but we could add that in as a supplement to that other funding that we have.
The only reason is, if it's not on here, people won't think that those funds are available.
Yes, sir.
Because everybody doesn't know what's available at Community Development. So, if it's in here, if it's in this document, when you send it out to those providers or whoever, they know that you can have that. I know we, at the Health Department, they do some Uber and some other things, and so, we just need to be creative, because it's difficult to get around this county.
Yes, sir. I can definitely include that.
Commissioner?
I take that as a promise, that that's what you're going to do.
Yes, ma'am.
I know firsthand how hard it is. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I trust him.
Any other questions or comments on this? Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Mr. Woll, I've got one question. So, for the pilot program regarding the timeline, the six months or until the funds are utilized, looking at this, what led to the 250K level for the program?
That particular dollar amount?
Yes, sir.
That's a dollar amount that I recommended to, to the group that was meeting to, I thought that was sufficient to administer a pilot program. The intention is, sometime in the near future, hopefully, I would, no, no further than six months, we would come back to the Board to discuss the performance of the program, to see if the program is doing what we proposed and intended for it to do. At that time, of course, we would come back to the Board for recommendation on how to move forward, if it's going to be continued, if there would be additional funding permitted for the program. But, we thought that 200, well, I thought and I brought to the, to the group, 250,000 was a sufficient number for a pilot program. And to that question as well, I would probably say that between three to six months is probably the time that you would see 250,000 spent in this type of program.
For the temporary housing that we had for the hotels, it was about $40,000 a month. So, roughly, 250, we get a six-month worth of funding for that. So, we've been spending, like, the last couple of months, we spent $40,000 for temporary shelter for homeless individuals.
Vice Sherman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Manager. This came about in the group, for those that are listening, that we were discussing. We actually have a project emergency shelter group that consists of the Manager, Mr. Ty, also Manager Heather, myself, as well as the Chairman. We thought there was a great need, as we know that unhoused is a crisis situation in this nation, as well as in our community. So, for those that are listening, that's how this came about, and as the Manager stated, we helped at least 20 to 25 families. Once our homeless shelter here in Fayetteville Salvation Army had closed down. So, our group is a, it's called the Project Emergency Shelter Emergency Group. So, we met, and we were trying to put in place as many things as possible to help with the crises here in Cumberland County. I want to thank Mr. Ty and his group, as I know that voucher programs do work, and we know there's a waiting list of that for the HUD voucher groups. So, we took it upon ourselves to take that initiative with actions to put in something in place here for the county to be able to do our part.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Faircloth?
Just have a quick question. We're notoriously bad for throwing around acronyms here in the county and elsewhere in the government. What is FMR under rent assistance?
Fair market rent. Fair market rent.
Fair market rent?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Everybody else will know that.
Yeah.
We'll spell out the acronym and the policy.
I will do that.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to start off by saying, I appreciate y'all putting this together so quickly, and I do believe that this is a critical issue that we do need to address. My concern that I'm going to raise is more procedural than anything else. You know, February, this Board adopted a policy of how items come through this body, and in that policy, you know, we had reconstituted our committee structure, and I don't see that this has a committee report attached to it. We had a Finance Committee meeting two days ago. We certainly also have an ARP Committee that we've used in the past to review these funding requests. So, the fact that this didn't go through our process, you know, So the fact that this didn't go through our process, you know, is a little concerning to me because I would not like to think that two Commissioners could get together and just usurp our process that the seven of us voted on. Another part that's also equally concerning is that it was brought before this Board, the concept was brought and the motion was made for us to spend county dollars on hotel rooms. We specifically voted and rejected that proposal. And it doesn't seem like there was deference given to that decision either. So I'm not saying I'm against the program, but I've got a little problem here with the procedure of how this went through, given what our policy is and the history of the vote that we took on this prior. And I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
So Commissioner Tyson, let me just clarify your comment. So this program that's came for, that has come for, the Homeless Prevention and Stability Voucher Program, it's a program that came through Community Development. And according to our policy, a manager can put items on the agenda. So in essence, it did follow a procedure, one. The concern of two members of this body allocating dollars or making, usurping the policy, I think is how you said it. Again, those were meetings that were held with the manager and the Assistant County Manager based on the leadership meeting that we had coming out of this emergency shelter situation. This was a program that had been worked over two years ago and was rebrought forward to solidify the issue of how we help homeless individuals or families that have a need where we do not have a facility right now. Again, this was staffed. The leadership and the two people you're addressing were the Chair and the Vice Chair. It was, we were briefed on that and the manager brought it through to this group to have a discussion. You can choose to make a motion to deny this if you wish. But according to our policy, the manager has the ability to move this through and put it on this item, put it on this agenda. And I'll, if you'd like to make a comment or a question on what I've explained, I'm glad to respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Typically, that exception will be given if there's an exigent need to move things through the body. The committee's already met. Seeing that the committee met two days ago prior to this meeting, its inclusion in that committee meeting would have been very, very simple. So I hear what you're saying, but the intent of that policy is so that if there's items that need to come before the Board and the committee has already met, then it gives the manager a procedure to do that. So again, I'm not against the program. In fact, I'm probably going to vote in favor of the program. But I'm just making a note that if we're going to have a policy in place, I think we generally need to follow it. That's all I'm saying.
And I'll follow that up with, if you look on this agenda, there's several items that didn't move through any committees. They were placed on the agenda based on the needs of the staff as well as the manager. So I'm in agreeance that we have policies. I believe you and I serve on the Policy Committee and put that policy in place. So I believe there should be policies and procedures. But I also believe that this was followed and it was properly briefed. This is actually something that's been worked for, has been brought up previously. So hearing no other comments on this, I will, unless anybody else has any other comments, I will entertain a motion, Vice Chairman Jones.
I make a motion that we approve the implementation of the Homelessness Prevention and Stabilization Voucher Program, pilot utilizing 250,000 of previously-approved ARP Freed Up General Funding Capacity. Also, I would like to state that we will make the amendment that Commissioner Glenn Adams stated in regards to that of the transportation to be included and that this item be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for the August 25, 2025, regular meeting as it would be on agenda as a regular item of business.
Second. We have a motion on the floor to approve the voucher and stabilization program with the addition of the transportation item in the policy. It's been properly seconded. I'd ask if you have any discussion or questions on this motion. Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vaught, just one clarification as I'm going through this. I see all, you know, for Section 7, the application documentation, I feel comfortable with that. The question I did have was when someone does qualify, just to clarify, for any of the eligible uses in Section 4, are those funds given directly to the individual? Or does, does it, do we write a check from the voucher program or from your office basically?
We work directly with the vendor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the motion? Again, the motion is to approve the presented voucher and stabilization program with the modification on the transportation. It's been properly seconded.
Is it for consent agenda or item of business?
Item of business. It'll move to the item of business. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your hand.
You may end this.
Thank you, Mr. Vaught. We'll go ahead and move forward to Item F, Continuum of Care Request for Positions.
Yes, Chairman. During the budget process, June 12, there was a request made for three positions from the COC. Hella Skeens, Assistant County Manager, would go through that and request approval to move it to a Policy Committee for approval and then to the Board.
Thank you. And I do have Ms. Brown, who is the Continuum of Care, or what we call COC Board Chair. So as the manager indicated, Ms. Brown presented to the Board of County Commissioners on June 12 with a presentation reviewing the point-in-time count and overview of the structure of the COC and the COC responsibilities. And as a reminder, HUD requires that COC provide three functions: coordinated entry, a collaborative applicant lead agency, and designate an agency to manage HMIS database, which is the homeless management database. The COC Board recently voted to move all three functions to the county after a year of strategic planning and reviewing all options. With that vote, Ms. Brown, on behalf of the COC Board, requested the county support these functions with the addition of three staff. Those three staff members and some additional dollars to support the position that the planning grant dollars cover totals a yearly request of $236,705 or a three-year request of $710,115. These positions include an administrative assistant to manage meetings, websites, and assistance with grant writing, an HMIS NC Care 360 data analyst, and a social worker housing navigator. We have an approved ARPA Freed Up Capacity allocation to support community development. And this allocation for these positions would align with the strategic intent to hire staff to support housing placement and case management services. These positions would be located and supervised by the Community Development Department. As the manager indicated, we felt that this was an urgent need to bring back to this meeting since we talked about it in June, to bring back to August. But we can bring it back to the ARPA Committee in September. The ARPA Committee was canceled for the month of August. And so we're requesting that we either move forward with placing this on the ARPA Committee for consideration or on a consent agenda. And again, Ms. Brown is here also as the expert to answer any questions.
So thank you, Assistant County Manager Skeens. I just want to remind, as you discussed at the beginning of this item, that the Board gave direction to move forward with this. So there was a previous decision by this Board, so it doesn't need to move back through any committees. There was just, it was an oversight during our budget process that was, as Commissioner Fairclough likes to frame, very long. But we wanted to make sure that we brought this back because we know this is a critical piece of how we are addressing our unhoused population and the work, the good work that the COC does. So I ask for if you have any questions or comments on this item.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion from Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the addition of three positions previously directed by the Board of Commissioners to support the Continuum of Care utilizing Freed Up Capacity Funds previously allocated to the Community Development Department for transitional and supportive housing services.
Second motion.
We have a motion on the floor, and this would approve it at this meeting. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the additional three positions directed by the Board for the COC. It's been properly seconded. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Commissioner Council, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman Devere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Fairclough voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
And Item G, we'll go ahead and move to the next item. Item G was pulled. We will go ahead and move to Item H, Maintenance and Repair Project Capacity Assessment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Of Items H, I, and J, Deborah Shaw, Budget and Performance Director, will present these items. And there's key staff members here for each one of the items, for those agenda items. And she will go through an overview, and the staff members will answer any additional questions you may have. Once we finish, I'll probably have a summary statement, just a general statement about all of the projects. I'll turn it over to Deborah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Afternoon.
At the June 10, 2025 Board of Commissioners Budget Work Session, a request was made for an assessment of maintenance and repair projects, technology, and capital improvement projects, considering project status and staff capacity. During the month of July, Jeremy Stefanco, Internal Services Director, Daniel Breister, Interim Director of Innovation and Technology Services, Amanda Lee, PE, General Manager of the Natural Resources, and Interim Engineer for the County, and Mr. Wayne Dudley, the Interim Director for County Engineer, conducted a thorough review of our projects. Projects were reviewed through the lens of several priority areas, and the goals for review were straightforward. Using these priorities, staff wanted to set realistic project goals for completion this fiscal year and asked the Board of Commissioners to move some projects into the fiscal year of '27. At this time, we will begin with maintenance and repair projects. Jeremy Stefanco, Internal Services Director, will be here to try to answer any project questions that you may have. Projects were reviewed through the lens of several priority areas that included safety, federal mandates such as ADA accommodations, current projects progress, the projects originally budgeted fiscal year, and the staff capacity. As you can see from the slide, two projects from fiscal year '24 were identified that had been delayed due to various reasons, including material, supplies, staff capacity, and transitions. Here are the 24 projects that have been re-appropriated to the fiscal year '26 for an amount of $26,919. These are the fiscal year '25 maintenance and repair projects that are being brought forward with a reappropriation of $226,000. You will notice that two fiscal year '25 projects for DSS installing air curtains in the north and south entrances and lighting upgrades do not have any funds re-appropriated because this cost is budgeted in the DSS budget for reimbursement purposes. These two reappropriations will be seen at the September meetings along with the DSS's other reappropriations. This slide captures the FY '26 projects that were adopted and can be completed in fiscal year '26. You will see the priority areas reflected in projects like library branch, ADA bathroom door operators, and health department security alarm upgrades. There are also some projects such as a bench in courtroom 206 that staff have a higher capacity to complete during the current fiscal year while also working on more complex projects. The total fiscal year '26 budget for these items is $679,500. As a result of this assessment, the Internal Services Director recommends these fiscal year '26 projects to be moved to fiscal year '27. While important, these projects were identified to be moved to fiscal year '27 due to a lower comparable priority for safety, mandates, and capacity to complete the projects. For example, emergency cell lines in 16-county elevators are important. However, this project does not need to take place until the scope of the modernization projects is further understood. If there is capacity to complete any of these items in fiscal year '26 upon completion of all the other items recommended projects, the Internal Services Director will bring these back to the Board for approval. Again, here you can see the summary of the total projects presented for fiscal year and the amounts re-appropriated from previous fiscal years for a total of approximately $1.3 million dedicated to maintenance and repair projects. And if you have any questions about specific questions, Mr. Stefanco is here to answer.
Commissioners, questions on this first item? Commissioner Adams, your recognition.
And I thought you did exceptionally well. But I did see the one for the Public Defender Front Office renovations. They're needed at for safety reasons for the people that come in there. I would ask that this be done in this year's budget. I've been in and out of that office. That needs to be done for safety. Yeah, it's only $20,000, yes. Just because they've added some more staff and they just need to have that renovated. And I think it needs to be done. That's all I have.
Any other comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Fairclough.
I would ask Commissioner Adams, what would you put it in place of? There's multitudes of courthouse items up there.
Yeah, but that one is a safety issue. I'd just say move the 20 back to do it this year. That's all. I'm not replacing anything. The rest of them I can live with. But I was just saying move that one into this year to be able to get done because of the need. That's all.
Let me rephrase that, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Is there something else that, if we move that forward, which I agree with him if that's the case, is there something else that would have to be bumped in order for capacity?
Yeah, you're talking about for capacity?
Yeah, I mean, they can only do so much. What needs to move?
Yeah, what we can actually do is do another review real quick and go through everything and just kind of visualize everything and see if we can actually get it done. But if that's a priority, you know, we can look at everything again, see if we can possibly bump one back and then move that one forward.
Yeah, I mean, it should be a big space, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And what we'll do is we'll send an email of what we found that we can move out, replace this one with. So we move, let's say there's $20,000. If we move it in, there's something we can move out. We'll send that, send the email with that next week.
Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really quick, just, can you, as y'all go over for us what the difference is between the M and R and the CapEx projects we've done? I know that there was some budget ordinances we went through over finance, and there was $9 million, I believe, that we had out that we had won. There was a carryover from FY '25. Can you just kind of go over how we delineate that some people?
On the budget order, at the Finance Committee, you'll see for maintenance and repairs, we appropriated $252,000. This is, what, this was FY '25? This is what, this was the FY '25 budget, we're reappropriating that into the FY '26 budget, so now the FY '26 revised budget is approximately 1.3, and that's for all the projects as they stand right now. I'm trying to go ahead and get everything reappropriated into the FY '26 year, and then if it's the Board's pleasure to take the recommendation and move some items into the FY '27, then I would bring action back to make an adjustment, to put the money back into fund balance.
So right now, that 360 down at the bottom, '26 to '27, that would go back in, with a fool with you all, that would go back into fund balance.
The 360 minus the 20.
Right.
Mr. Commissioner, go ahead. And I got you there. I guess what I'm asking for is the distinction between what we code as an M&R item versus a CapEx item, and how we differentiate.
Anything over $100,000 and could potentially take more than one year is a capital improvement project, which you will see. These are items that can usually be done within a year, usually, if staff capacity, and usually less than $100,000.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Powell?
So, Ms. Shaw, just before we make any motions, to clarify, from your end, while Mr. Stefanco goes back in, looks at the projects and reviews what we're going to be able to tangibly accomplish, which, and correct me if I'm wrong, your recommendations, go ahead and approve this, and then go ahead and make the budget revision with the recommendations that...
I would recommend go ahead and reappropriate everything for FY '25 that was not done because it's claimed to get into the FY '26 budget. And then whatever is from this Board is not being recommended, we would bring back at a future action to unfund those positions and place, unfund those dollars and put them back into the capital investment fund balance. If that's the pleasure of the Board. Because the '25 year is gone, but again, it's the pleasure of the Board.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the M&R project capacity assessment, or based on the review from staff, go ahead and approve the M&R project capacity assessment and the projects to be moved to FY '27 to be placed as an item on our next agenda meeting.
Sure, the my public defender?
And to encompass Commissioner Adams's request for the public defenders, so, but I believe that would come back from staff.
Sorry.
We have a motion...
It is at what, the September meeting to go ahead and bring back, I'm going to go ahead and let the budget revision stand for August the 25th, the reappropriation, and then on the September, I could come back and unfund what's not going to be much.
The 20, for '27.
'27.
Right.
On the...
On the...
On the...
All right, so there's a motion to approve the M&R budget capacity and place it on the consent item, consent agenda on April, on August 25th. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion on this motion or questions?
I guess I missed that. What does that do with the item that I requested, I guess?
So I'm incorporating it in his motion. They're going to come back to us. The manager said he's going to bring that back to us next week and let us know where it falls in. What, they either have to move out, or if facilities can add it in with the current capacity of M&R, then they'll do that. That's incumbent. Madam Clerk, do you have a question?
No, I was just going to do the second.
Second was Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your hand.
May I ask?
One point is, and I don't know if you're going to talk, but kind of looking at it. Okay, all right. No point. We'll go ahead and move to the next item. We'll move to Technology Project Capacity Assessment.
At this time, we will turn our attention to technology. As previously mentioned, during the month of July, Daniel Reister, the interim Innovation and Technology Services Director, and his staff conducted a thorough review of the technology projects. Projects were reviewed prioritizing security, life cycle considerations, federal or other mandates, commissioner requests, and staff capacity to complete the project. Projects for fiscal year '24 and '25 were identified during this assessment. One project from fiscal year '24 that remains not started is the BDA for the Health Department. Once the BDA for the Health Department is complete, then the BDA project for the DSS will follow. The BDA for the Health Department and the Wayfinding Kiosk, which was a fiscal year '25 budget, will be asked to be reappropriated for the FY '26 budget. Again, DSS projects reside in their budget for reimbursement purposes and will be asked to be reappropriated at the meeting in September. Civic Plus, as you can see, has a year-to-date actual cost. However, that has been paid, and it is in the process of being implemented. As you can see, the other projects, such as Next Request and Cobblestone from fiscal year '25, has been budgeted from the internals, I mean, from the Innovation and Technology Services operating budget, and therefore are not reappropriated into the fiscal year '26 capital investment fund balance for technology. There's two fiscal year '25 projects, Timekeeping Plus and the Public Utilities Building, are not being recommended to be moved to the fiscal year '27 due to the staff capacity and the complexity of the project implementation. The total amount for the fiscal year '25 projects to move to fiscal year '27 is approximately This slide captures the fiscal year '26 projects that are being prioritized to move forward this fiscal year. Priorities can be reflected in projects such as the ADA PDF check repair, cradle points for animal services, firewalls for the LEC, and the Amplifund software. Munis SaaS migration is included on this list as a project to move forward, but is not included in the fiscal year '26 capital investment fund balance allocation for technology as the cost is already in their operational budget. Here you can see the summary totals for all the technology projects within the capital investment fund for a total of approximately $2.4 million. And if you have any questions, Daniel and myself are here to answer.
Commissioners, questions on the technology side projects? Questions? Hearing none, Commissioner Patel, entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'll make a motion to approve the Technology Project Capacity Assessment to include the proposed FY '27 projects and for the items to be placed as an item of consent for the August 25th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting agenda.
Taking the motion.
We have a motion to approve the Technology Project Capacity and a move it to the consent agenda on August 25th at our regular meeting. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
May I ask?
We'll go ahead and move to Item J, Capital Improvement Project Assessment, the fun
Now, we will turn our attention to the capital investment, capital improvement projects. Amanda Lee, P.E., General Manager Financial Resources, and the interim County Engineer will be presenting these items along with Jeremy Stefanco, Internal Services Director.
So, there is some overlap with maintenance and repair projects and capital improvement projects. My involvement with these capital projects is to assess budget, further refine scope, and develop a path forward. Many of these projects you'll see have not commenced beyond the initial identification of need. They've not been pushed forward. As we move forward, we are integrating a comprehensive assessment of the systems involved and how to implement improvements for the best value for the county, including redundancy, reliability, and efficiency. For the elevator modernization projects, a budget reappropriation in the amount of 1.2, approximately 1.2 million will be on the consent agenda for the August 25, 2025 meeting. We are going to prepare a battery of testing requirements for this assessment to ensure the condition of the existing elevator systems are properly documented. For the mechanical projects, a budget reappropriation in the amount of 1.1 million dollars is requested for the large mechanical projects. We are reviewing the scope and looking carefully at opportunities for redundancy and reliability. We are prioritizing projects based on immediate needs, including current downtime, potential downtime, and loads. For the structural building envelope projects, a budget reappropriation in the amount of 2.1 million is requested for building envelope and structural improvements. We are reviewing the scope and looking carefully, again, at immediate and long-term needs with respect to budget. Renovation. Areas to be carpeted and painted have been identified in a schedule and are being coordinated. We continue to work on the development of the specifications to ensure lasting and durable And then we also have this new construction project, the Animal Services Isolation Building. We have been working on initial assessment, evaluating the existing storm drainage on site, what improvements and rehabilitation are needed to accommodate this expansion. We are also looking at the building programming, identifying that mechanical improvements and ventilation, ventilation is going to be critical because of the nature of this building with sick animals, so we're working on that program now. For electrical, we do have the detention center switchgear upgrade, and as mentioned previously, we will be working on that in conjunction with the HVAC projects at the law enforcement center, or at the detention center. So at this time, engineering has been busy with projects in progress. There have been ongoing maintenance issues with some issues that have resulted in these projects being identified. Many of them are well on their way, and we're looking towards completion in this fiscal year, many with completion at the end of the calendar year. And we are asking for a reappropriation in the amount of 3.2 million dollars for these To reappropriate, I'm sorry, at the August 25th, 25, 2025 meeting. And then that was for there, and then the total amount to be reappropriated is 8,932,000. And with that, we'll tape. Any questions you may have?
Commissioner Tyson, your address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reappropriated amount, is that coming for these projects in particular, is that coming out of the CIP fund, or is it coming out of the general fund?
Capital Investment Fund, CIP.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the projects that are in progress, I think there's about 16 or 17, can you just elaborate just a little, you don't have to go into too much detail, will half of these be finished by the end of this year, or can we get approximation, like on there? Are any of these going to be completed by the end of this year?
Yeah, so the majority of these will be completed by the end of calendar year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patel, your address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Shaw, this might be a question for you, and I may just be looking at numbers, but in the CIF, do we currently have enough funding to, for all of the projects that are in progress?
I'll have to refer that to the men.
For performance?
And I'm going to look at, Jeremy, I think for the ones in progress, we have adequate funding. The concern that we will be looking at more closely are those that are not in progress, refining budget.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that at one point in time, I don't know if that status has changed, the elevator modernization, there was the stating, I guess, that in regards to who provides that particular service, there was a shortage. As there any update I noticed on here with any of these elevators, have we put more in? I know that that was a concern before, that you had stated prior, he had stated prior that handles this, that there was a need of, I guess when we did assessment, several elevators need to be replaced, but then I guess my understanding was that there's not too many people, I guess, that provide that type of service. So what's the update status? Have we had some repairs since then, or what's the situation?
I'll take that one. One of the things in this process, we kind of do this a little bit later, but it was good that we went through this. One of the things that we need to, with elevators, is kind of slow down. I think we moved a little quickly and something not correctly. We want to make sure on all of the elevator modernization and outfits that we have the right scope and we have the right contractor. I think one of the concerns that we're experiencing is, at some of our major venues, we've had recently some issues with the elevators, and we're concerned that we don't have the right contractors that are helping us along the way. And so, and with that being said, there's only a few number of contractors who do elevator work, so that capacity to get it done in a particular time is always concerning for us. And so, as we move forward with those, we'll always keep you updated now from now on on a monthly basis on where we stand with those elevator upfits and modernizations, and if there is some form of funding issue, we'll let you know on a monthly basis. The biggest issue, again, you got, there's not a lot of capacity of people who actually perform and provide that type of service for its modernization. And once they're on the job, they got to stay on the job. If you let them go, they could go to another job, and then it delays it two or three months.
And this is more of a statement, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern, of course, no doubt, you all know what I'm going to say, is just that making sure that individuals, ADA, might have to go to, you know, Social Service Department or Public Health Department, making sure that in the event, since we do understand that situation, that we might have to take in accountability in certain departments, that areas that might be on the second or third floor, that, you know, switch some things around for that to be on the bottom level floor, to make sure that individuals that can't utilize steps can still be provided with services.
One of the things we made sure of, especially with all elevator modernizations and upfits, is that we only take down one elevator at a time. So we made sure that one is working at all the time and is accessible for ADA purposes and all. and all. We require by law for that. So, again, we want to look at that one a little bit more in depth as we move forward because, again, we recently experienced some issues with elevators and, you know, we want to kind of go back and reassess what we're actually doing and who we actually contract with.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for that. Safety first, appreciate that.
Additional questions, comments? Commissioner Tyson, run to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a one question with 25312. That's the Enid Smith flooring. And I did a quick search of our GIS, and it looks like that's owned by our hospital system. I'm just curious.
It is, that's correct. And we basically leased the bottom floor over there, but we kind of basically maintained that whole section down there. Same thing goes for security cameras or anything else on that floor.
Got you. So, that's just the first floor of the building?
Yes, sir, correct.
And for clarification, we don't lease it. We retained a 90-year leasehold interest. We're not paying any rent.
Got you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Patel, your recognition.
So, thank you for putting this together. I know it's extremely helpful to see the different projects. One of the concerns I have is looking at this, I still want to make sure that, one, we're handling everything in a manner that isn't overreaching our capacity and encumbering dollars that we could potentially use elsewhere. So, I know we will go and review the maintenance and repair again and kind of reprioritize that list. For the CIP, could we also look, and I don't know, Chairman, if you need this in motion, but could we get a look at all of the projects that are currently in progress, see the actual percentage if you can, you know, like if it's 50% progress or close to 100%? Some idea to give us an idea of where we are on the full metric? And then additionally.
I'd just like to clarify that these projects are in progress, and these that were identified separately have not really started beyond the identification of need.
If I may jump in, so, in the beginning, that General Manager Lee brought in these elevator modernization and the other projects, these are projects that have been budgeted but were delayed. And so, what General Manager Lee is working on with the team is to define the scope of the project that would really give us that detailed aspect that you were mentioning, Commissioner Patel.
Like this project right here has not been started. There's no year-to-date cost or anything.
So.
Right here.
I guess for the board, would it be easier for, you know, relook at this, reprioritize this with the maintenance and repairs, the fact that we're moving forward with the tech, and give us a new idea on CIP next month at the agenda meeting?
Kind of what can be done this year, what can be done this year and what possibly. And again, and again, these projects, again, these projects do take more than a year, but what do you think could get started?
Yeah, these are in the CIP, the capital investment fund, so they, they are more than one-year projects. The maintenance and repair projects are year, one-year projects. These are more than one-year projects that, like elevator modernizations, they generally take a little bit over, not so much a year, but they may overlap a year, a fiscal year.
Vice Chairman Jones. Now, I'll go back to Commissioner Patel.
I understand what Commissioner Patel is saying respectfully, but I guess my only concern would be is that wouldn't prices change though? Is that why, also another reason? That would be my only concern. I understand and respect what he's saying, but I wouldn't want to get an estimate price on this, and like you guys said, you all, excuse me, two to three years, but then when we actually start on it, building prices might be different from their estimate you give us now. Is that one of the also reasons? See what I'm saying? Like, you have zero, which is right, because we don't know when we're going to start it, but say if, for example, I think it says the, a boiler, you know, if you give me something now, but then when we start on it a year or two from now, the prices might, just like, you know, steel or anything else, the prices might change then. So, it wouldn't really be an accurate estimate. Unless you knew for sure that, okay, we're going to start next month.
You are correct.
Okay.
So, just as a point, the purpose of this, we approved the CIP in the budget. This is just for the approval of the reallocation from previous years to get it moved forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's the purpose of this. I think there is, what I kind of hear here as well as in previous committees and in review of the work, is a desire to see project status like red, yellow, green, percentage of completion, so that we can see, for example, the elevator projects and understand why. But we're at red, we haven't started anything, and we've got 2 million or X amount of million of dollars allocated against that. Understanding this isn't about the approval process, this is about how are we moving our projects forward.
Yes.
So, and I think we routinely had a projects report that used to come to this board a long time ago, as I understand it. Maybe I'm wrong.
Six months ago, it kind of stopped, and so, we'll, we'll, we'll start getting it again.
But I think it may be helpful to bring that format, you know, and I would say in the essence of time, you could send it out to the board to take a look at, and then that's something that could routinely get briefed at the infrastructure meeting, and then it could be a monthly report that comes into the board. But that would give us visibility of red, amber, green project status, because I think what you heard, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I think I understood what the board's intent was during the budget. While we approved it and we're approving the move forward, we want to make sure that the projects are moving and we're not just encumbering dollars and in some cases, re-scoping some of those projects because the original scope may have not been accurate. Is that a fair assessment?
Bingo.
Okay.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreeance with the chair, and then what I would like to also see, like projects in progress, since you all have stated that these 17 are already in progress, if we could just get an update like how they're coming along as they are being, as they're being completed, number one, or if there, if something happens where there's a stagnation, you know, maybe a part didn't come in, or if, because we do know that these are active. So, I would just like in that report to, you know, just an update on how that's progressing or if there ends up being a, you know, because the price in those might change too. Say, for instance, you know, a part price might change or it might not come in, and so the reason for, like if there's stagnation, since you said that all these projects should be finished by the end, the end of the year, correct?
By calendar year.
Calendar year.
These we shall be done by calendar year.
So, just to make sure, definitely to focus on updates on those that we do know are accurately active at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Manager, I believe it'd be fair to say too, on some of these items, for example, your structural building envelope projects, this allocation may not be for the project itself, it may be so that you can do an assessment. Because I know you mentioned during the budget, the LEC parking deck repairs, for example.
Right.
The 1.25, you felt like that wasn't going to be adequate to cover the project, but you're not going to know until you do the assessment.
Yes. And then that's one of the things that, over the last month and a half, that we kind of looked at and said, well, we're going to need money to assess the issue, make sure we had the right capacity and scope with the project. And then if we need to move money around in our CIP, we're going to bring that back forward to you. Because, again, we may find out that we may have a million dollars budget for an elevator project, it may come in at a million five. That means we got to re-appropriate for one and maybe move one out. And so, I think what staff has learned over the last month and a half is that we're going to be really engaged in making sure that we get these capital projects moved forward, not just appropriating them, and making sure that we do what we can with the capacity that we have. And this is the first year we've actually had a capital investment plan, like a formalized plan. And so, we want to look out five years, and if we can move out, look out and move things out, then we'll bring that back and reengage you all on a monthly basis, monthly quarter basis. Because, again, we see the issues, and we're trying to put a dollar amount to the issues and plan, so we can address those issues moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tyson, and thank you, County Manager. I think that's a good explanation of kind of where we are. I'll move back to Commissioner Tyson if we're, anybody has any other questions, we can entertain.
Did I say Tyson?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Patel. I'm used to calling on Commissioner Tyson. Commissioner Patel, move back to Commissioner Patel, entertain if we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion now to go ahead and approve the CIP assessment, plan moving forward and schedule, and this, that the assessment be placed on. Do you want to do the agenda meeting?
Consent on that.
Regular meeting. I'll have to consent on the regular reading of August 25, 2025.
Is it consent on?
It's consent on.
Got a motion to approve the capital improvement project assessment plan, the move forward amount, move it to the consent agenda on August 25 of the Board of Commissioners' meeting. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And I just want to caveat, Mr. Manager, we're going to look at that project matrix or whatever we're going to call it, and so, when would that, we get a first look at that to?
Probably be after, it'll probably be September. The reason being is we have to firm up these numbers because they have an impact on the end year in audit. And so, whatever our fund balance is, or whatever we reappropriate, or whatever's approved for reappropriation, that has a, that has an effect on the fund balance and available fund balance and what we have to reserve our state statute.
But as far as not specific to the dollar amount, but to the project's status?
And to the status, we'll have that too. It'll be probably mid-September.
So, could we bring, could we shoot for the September infrastructure meeting?
Yes.
Infrastructure.
Shoot for the infrastructure, and then we could bring it to the agenda for a look at our monthly reports.
And I'll just add that we did that, we just didn't put that on the schedule, because in order to get to this point, we, we had to go through all of these, and I'd like to just commend staff for what they did over the last month and a half. It was a phenomenal job to go through all these projects, scope them, and make sure that we had the right numbers of dollar amounts, and then we knew what the project's status actually was.
And I was just about to echo that. And we know, we asked for it during the budget, we know that's a heavy lift, especially with the level of staff that we have right now, it's a double hats that people are wearing, so we're very appreciative to that. But also, I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that we're looking at it as well each month from a project's status, to make sure that things are happening, and if there's a shift to resources, that that's identified to us so we can assist there as needed. Any other comments as a follow-up on item J? Hearing none, we'll move to item K, Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application for Godwin Subdivision Project Norcrest Sewer System, before Ms. Lee doesn't get to move.
I think Amanda Lee, General Manager of Natural Resources, and Amy Hall, Public Utilities Manager, will present this item and answer your questions you have. Finally got Amy's title right.
Good afternoon.
On November 4, 2024, the Board of Commissioners and the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board approved the connection of the 116-lot Godwin subdivision to the existing Norcrest Sewer System that included the approval of the utility service agreement. The Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application was approved and executed at that time. The Norcrest Sewer System and the Fayetteville Public Works Commission Cross Creek wastewater treatment facility have the capacity to accept the 26,100 gallons per day projected flow. An updated Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application has been requested by the Fayetteville Public Works Commission. The Public Utilities Project Manager, General Manager for Natural Resources, and County Management recommend the following proposed actions. Approve the Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application for the Godwin subdivision. Authorize the chairman to execute the attached Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application. Approve these items to be an item of consent for the August 25, 2025 Board of Commissioners' Meeting Regular Meeting Agenda, and as an item of consent for the Norcrest Water and Sewer District Governing Board on August 25, 2025 agenda. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions on this item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Do you have a good question, Commissioner Fairborn? I'll entertain a, entertain a motion from Commissioner Tyson.
Yeah, just a quick question, Mr. Chairman, too. And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to come to the infrastructure committee yesterday. Did y'all get briefed on this prior to that, too?
This one, we did not. It did not come to infrastructure.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready to hear one.
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion that we approve the following actions. Approve the Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application for the Godwin subdivision. Authorize the chairman to execute the attached Fast Track Sewer System Extension Application. Approve these items to be an item of consent for the August 25, 2025 Board of Commissioners' Meeting Regular Meeting Agenda, and as an item of consent for the Norcross Water and Sewer District Governing Board on August 25, 2025.
Take the motion. We have a motion to approve the Fast Track application and the authorization to sign the extension, move it to the consent agenda on the April, on the August 25 meeting. Are there any, it's been seconded, are there any questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, and we have pulled item L, and that will be sent to Infrastructure Committee, and item M, did we pull M? No.
No. Item M, I just wanted to get direction from the board and make, and get approval from the board that I investigate repaving the parking lot, gotten a preliminary estimate for the crown, the site out front, approximately 2 million to 2.7 million dollars. I've also heard from community members about open space, and then there's been some future economic development possibilities that people wanted, that the community have investigated about it. And I wanted just to get approval to look at, I'll explore all three and talk with Robert Van Gens on the economic development possibilities and bring it forward to the next Infrastructure Committee meeting.
I'll make that into a motion, Mr. Chairman. Would you like for me to?
We can give direction. I don't think we need, I don't, I don't think we need a motion because there's not a formal action. Before we move to that, we'll ask, open it up for any questions or other comments. Vice Chairman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Amanda Greer. I guess I do have a question or comment in regards, I know you stated that we make sure to get the input from our community, so will the staff or yourself be developing? How will we do this? Are we going to have a town hall? Are we going to have some type of survey to make sure? That's the question that I know, I'm sure the other commissioners as well as myself have been, been, many several community members have been saying they would like to have some input, I guess, on suggestions of what they would like to maybe be considered in that area. So, will the staff be developing a survey, or will we be considering a town hall to see how we can get the input from our concerned citizens that would like to at least have some input on possibility, suggestions, or recommendations for that particular spot?
Probably a survey, just based on, and in general comments, as I'm moving about the county, you may want to consider open space, you may want to consider this, you may want to consider that. So, I just wanted to be able to explore all those options, bring them to the Infrastructure Committee, get some buy-in, and then move it forward to an agenda session and avoid meeting to discuss and get formal proof for the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, because I think that would be great, some type of survey that we could put it on our social media, given a reasonable amount of time to have people to answer the questionnaire or be able to. people to answer the questionnaire, be able to give their input. That was my other question. Thank you.
Commissioner Fairconn?
Well, my thinking is, the priority should be to repave the parking lot. Doesn't mean we have to use all of it, but we've got to alleviate the parking problem that we have now, and we've got to do it as soon as possible. So the more public input, or the more delay we have, the more employees and patrons of the, of the parking, of the court system are having to go here and y'know, to try to find parking. So I would say the priority would be to repave the parking lot. I guess we could assess how many spaces we needed, need, and what that would take, and, and see, once we have decided that we have enough for parking, if there's something left over for open space, or future economic development, we could look at that. But to me, it was a parking lot that needs to return to that status.
Other comments or questions on this? So I think just three, Commissioner Dyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to the County Manager for, one, presenting this as, as an item, and giving the board a chance to give you some feedback on this, and for, two, coming back and presenting this to Infrastructure. I think that's an appropriate path, and really appreciate you bringing this forward.
Any other comments? County Manager, I think I'm understanding consensus. I just want to also state, the intent of this board, as it was after the June 4th meeting, was to always identify the short-term need for parking that we have, public parking, as well as courthouse parking for our employees. So that's always been a short-term identification, which is why the manager has researched some of the pricing of that. I think now, we just need direction on exactly what we're going to do there. So I would also ask that we look at other footprints for parking as well, even in a short term, because we know if we do repave or do any type of parking infrastructure on that Gillespie Street lot, that it's going to take time. So there may be some additional capacity, like the short-term that we purchased with the church and other facilities. There may be other footprints in the, in the downtown that we could also look at that's contiguous to the courthouse, or convenient to the courthouse. And then connect with Robert Van Gheens with economic development, to look at the private development options that I know that, that he may have at his disposal as our, as our economic development arm, to look at any kind of public-private partnership potentially, or private partner, or private development altogether. I think there's consensus to do that, unless I'm hearing anything else, and you're gonna bring that back to the September Infrastructure Committee, unless the committee infrastructure chair decides to bypass it and move it back to this committee, which the chair has that ability to do, as we did with the unhoused support committee brief that came to the board on Monday at the Board of Commissioners meeting. That's, unless I hear anything else, the consensus of this board and direction to the manager?
Okay.
That's consensus direction. Do you have any other comments or questions, Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just, I want to make sure that I'm clear then. So he's just going to be finding out more information about the cost for the repave of the parking lot, and consideration of open space, and also consideration for economic development, development possibilities?
Yes, I'm bringing that back.
Okay, thank you.
September, sure. It's all right? All right, so that's direction, no motion needed on that. I believe we move to item five. Other items, are there any other items of business?
All other items of business.
We'll go ahead and move to the monthly reports. We have item six, monthly reports. County Manager?
Yeah, I just asked the board collectively, do they have any, any questions regarding the finance report, the monthly finance report, the health insurance update, the Opera Quarterly Project and the expenditure report as of June 30th, the Opera Annual Recovery Plan, the Well Path Quarterly Certological Report for Immigrant Healthcare, and the grants update.
Commissioners, questions on the monthly report? One request that I would just have in reviewing the reports on item C, if there's a way to get a summary doc that sits on top, so we don't have to go through every line item, or every page, would be helpful as we review those. And then moving forward, we're gonna add a monthly report on here for projects, whether, call them CIP, or however we, we want to identify that, once that comes out of infrastructure next time. Any other questions or comments on monthly reports? Hearing none, I'll move to item seven, closed session, identified our attorney needs a brief closed session. That closed session would be in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3. I would entertain a motion for that. Vice Chairman Jones?
Motion to go into closed session.
I mean, second?
We have a motion to go into closed session in accordance with attorney-client privilege, North Carolina Statute 143, 31811A3. It's been properly seconded, all in favor. Any questions on the, on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand.
Unanimous.